Call to order, this Bixby, City of Bixby, special session, March 30th, 2015, at 6:01 PM. Yvonne, would you like to call the roll?
Lautermail.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Totoroff.
Here.
Guthrie.
Here.
And Easton.
Here. Please stand for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for an intervention, Yvonne.
Let me bow our heads. Dear Lord, we come before you tonight with thanksgiving, thanking you for each person that is here tonight. Lord, I pray for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding for this council tonight to make the decisions for the city of Bixby that will be done according to your will and your will only. Thank you again. I ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Consent agenda. We got any discussion, questions, comments?
I'd like to pull the last two items, Mayor.
Do you want to pull those, Councilman Stewart, or discuss?
Yes, sir, please.
Just pull?
And we can discuss, too, if there is a time for that.
Okay.
Can we discuss them?
Do we discuss them now, or after we pull?
After.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and D?
So moved.
Second.
Totoroff.
Yes.
Lautermail.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes.
And Easton.
Yes. Item E, Councilman Stewart?
Thank you, sir. In reference to the nineteen thousand dollar expenditure, sixty inch mower, is that one being replaced, or is that an addition to? I noticed it is out of the capital improvement fund. I just didn't know if that was a... And it would also go along with item F as well? If the thirty-one thousand dollar expenditure is one that is being replaced, or is that a new, a new purchase?
Counselor Stewart, that's a replacement. I'm getting fifteen hundred dollars trade-in on a 2007 model mower.
Okay, on both of them?
No, on just the one mower, the sixty inch mower.
The sixty inch mower, the ground master?
That's for the parts.
Okay.
Parks department.
Public Works Director will address the second item you're asking about.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that's a budget item? I'm assuming you had it in the budget, it's budget item?
Yes, sir.
And in reference to that, was there a, was there an inquiry made as to the maintenance of the other mower to, I don't know, keep it going, or, you know?
Well, the...
Is it on its last leg?
Well, it's, it's one repair from being on its last leg. The value of it is worth fifteen hundred dollars trade-in right now, and it's a seven-year-old mower. Usually you want to trade mowers about five years of this particular style and size.
And where is it utilized at? Primarily, is it for all the parts?
General, general parks mowers.
So it goes to all the parks, not just the ball fields?
It's on trim mowing for just the parks, rougher areas out there.
Thank you, sir.
We have to take these one at a time. You're going to talk on item F?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item E, any further discussion, comment? Do we have a motion on what to do with item E?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Lautermail.
Yes.
Totoroff.
Yes.
Stewart.
No.
Guthrie.
Yes.
And Easton.
Yes. Item F, Councilman Stewart?
Hello, is this a, is this for the cemetery?
Yes, sir.
So it's going to be out there? And you already have, this is a tractor.
Mm-hmm.
Is it replacing one already?
Yes, it's replacing one that was sold at surplus last year.
So you need another one out there?
Very old one. I need another one to backfill graves, and the city did purchase twenty-five acres in the 2006 bond, and there was an agreement that Mrs. Watkins was to be able to keep her cattle there for three years. That's gone through, and we want to actually be able to maintain that before it just becomes completely wild, and when we do need to use that for expansion of the cemetery, that is not more expensive, too.
How have the graves been dug in the interim?
We do have a backhoe to dig the graves. It's coming back and driving. This one, this tractor has turf tires, so it's coming back and forth and filling the graves.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion on item F?
Move to approve.
Second.
Totoroff.
Yes.
Lautermail.
Yes.
Stewart.
No.
Guthrie.
Yes.
And Easton.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Which brings us to the regular agenda. Item number one, public hearing to request citizen comments on possible projects for fiscal year 2015 Urban County Community Development Grant Program. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution for your consideration. Did I read that right?
It is a public hearing for, I don't think the resolution's with...
Okay, I got ahead of myself.
Just a public, just a public hearing.
This is just a public hearing to receive input from the public on projects for our CDBG 2015 grant application. If, if there are no comments from the public to the contrary, we do have in mind a project for your consideration that we'll bring at the next meeting. Bixby has, in the most recent census release, we've lost all of our pre-qualified low moderate income census tracts and census block groups. So the only thing that we can do are things that are pre-qualified, such as ADA sidewalks. The city manager and the city staff have discussed this. We would like to propose that next month, and we'll bring you the details at that time. But this is a public hearing for anybody that would want to say anything about what we should do for our application.
Any council comment?
Mayor, I do. The, I was looking at, I looked this up online, and it talks about, and when I looked at the website, it says, "A guarantee must develop and follow a detailed plan." This is from the federal government. I've got my sources, the HUD.gov. Is that, is that where this comes from, correct?
We have a subject matter expert here, Steve Vetker with INCOG.
Okay.
That would probably be a better authority on the, where this comes from.
Good evening. I'm from INCOG, Steve Vetker, and yes, HUD.gov is your website. These are federal funds, and they go directly to Tulsa County, which is a CDBG, that's Community Development Block Grant entitlement. Tulsa County basically is an urban county, meaning the suburbs and Tulsa County, excuse me, Tulsa County come together to form the urban county. So Tulsa County has a lot of the master documents, like the Citizen Participation Plan. The environmental review process goes through Tulsa County. The member governments basically have an agreement to join the urban county. So all you all have to do is select a project and submit it to Tulsa County every spring. And Bixby is in the class called Metro Cities, meaning that you have a targeted allocation, that you don't have to compete against other towns and urban counties. So we ask that you have a public hearing, so that any citizens that want to ask questions, suggest a project, they can do that. If somebody suggests a project, and they say, "Let's do this street," you can consider it. You don't have to stop what you want to do. You are the governing body. You all will be selecting the project ultimately. This is just an opportunity to hear citizens comment, suggest. It can be for this year or for next year. And one thing I do need to add, Bixby did lose that census tract qualification on block groups, but you have other options. You have the income survey option, which is a little rushed for this year, but maybe next year. The Midland addition over here, obviously that's an area. If your city staff did an income survey over the telephone, they could qualify that area, set aside as a district, so to speak, for five years, and you could go in each year and do drainage, sidewalks, water lines. You'd be all set up. So you're not totally limited to the ADA sidewalk. And the third option is anything to do with senior citizens, a senior center, a van, that's another option. Our communities have used, and we have eighteen communities in the Tulsa County urban county. And Bixby has been a member from day one of that formation. So I hope I covered everything. If you have anything else, I'd be happy to address it.
Are you aware, any projects we've undertaken in the Bixby metro, in our Bixby area that were covered by this green?
Yes, you have, you have one that's in formation, that's a multi-year accumulation of like three years of funding to go into the Midland addition, and they've already completed one phase of drainage, and this would be three years combined in the Midland addition. And previous projects have been in Riverview and Jim King. I'm kind of drawing up, it's like a pop quiz. But yes, you have definitely been active in the program. And every year you have an allocation, so there should be something that's either done that year or combined with previous years.
I apologize for the questions.
Oh, that's fine.
It's the first time I've seen this come up, because this is my first four years, so I was wanting to figure out what that was. Sounds like a good program.
And also on the INCOG website, we have lots of information about the CDBG program and the home program, that you can find out a lot of the details.
So for right now, it's basically just the ADA sidewalks is about all we could really do until we...
That's a good project, because you don't have to worry about the low moderate income population. So that is an option. But in the future, you think about income surveys or senior center projects.
Okay.
I guess this is a question for Doug or Eric. How are we soliciting citizen participation other than this forum that we're having here tonight?
Well, this is the public hearing to solicit input from the public.
And is anyone from that particular addition that was trying to secure the grant for, are they present here?
The ones that were mentioned in the Midland addition for drainage, we did have the public hearing every year as per normal. This would be new. We still have to define the parameters of the district, but it would be generally downtown area.
Okay.
It's been the concerted policy of council in the past to try to target dollars into this area, because it, try to get additional development in the area, and try to help improve property values and improve drainage, which is a particular goal that Bixby and Jared can add to it.
The two qualifying areas that we had were downtown and the King addition in the past, so that's where a lot of our effort was expended. We did do a couple of different income surveys to qualify some other groups for projects that we wanted to do in that area. But with mobility, with the downtown, a lot of these areas don't have sidewalks. We've had schools, we have the downtown, and so that's a qualifying project. It fits in with a lot of the other priorities that we have, and so that we felt that for a year, two, three years, whatever we could do to extend some of the sidewalks in the downtown areas, out in the neighborhoods, in areas that don't have sidewalks right now, would be the best bet that we have in the near term to build on what we're already getting ready to do.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak on the CDVG grant application? If not, Mayor, I'd advise to close public hearing, and that would conclude that agenda item.
Okay, if there's no further comment or discussion, we close that public hearing. And we move on to regular agenda item number two, discussion and consideration to approve an application for major amendment number one, supplemental zoning, PUD 81, for approximately twenty-three acres at 12303 South Memorial Drive. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. The history of this is, we saw this first in late 2013 as a PUD 81 and underlying zoning change for multifamily. That was approved in its application form at the end of 2013, because the developer was not at that time entitled to the property. In early 2014, the developer came back and did ask that the PUD and rezoning be approved by ordinance, and that was done. There was a change between the two times in that the developer had a new architect that had some different designs for the property. We do now have Larry Kestner of Architects Collective is the architect on the project. We have a number of new designs. We have a number of significant changes that they're proposing. The, number one, they would like some of the buildings to go up to a fourth story, and they do need a little bit of a height exception. Right now, they're limited to forty-eight feet in height, and that's per their PUD and the underlying residential zoning district of the zoning code.
What are we asking for, Eric?
They're asking to go to fifty feet.
Two additional feet?
Initially, they asked for fifty-four. Fire marshal, fire chief have considered it, considered their capabilities, and they have said fifty foot should be the maximum. So they have it now in their PUD at fifty...
Two foot.
The other thing is, the original PUD said that seventy-five percent of the exteriors of the buildings, all of them individually and equally, would be masonry, but it didn't define masonry, and didn't tell us what they were expecting to put into their project. With the new designs, and I have agenda package for the old perspective drawings that we had, and the new elevations that they're proposing, with the new designs, they'd like to change the design to have more traditional masonry, brick and stone. At this point, they are proposing forty percent brick and stone, the balance being cementitious fiber. Cementitious fiber is a cement concrete product that we've been informed about here very recently. So this would change that percentage and specify the different types of masonry materials and masonry alternatives. I did get the revised PUD amendment document today. I did not have time to complete my review of that. There are a lot of details on this site plan, because it was initially designed to be, on this agenda, the PUD detailed site plan, but it wasn't quite ready, wasn't quite ready for planning commission. But because of the level of detail on that conceptual site plan, there are still a lot of details to be tied up.
Okay, so what we are discussing tonight is a two-foot height variance, and then a definition or a setting of our masonry standard.
Those are the two initial things they proposed. There are some other moving parts to this thing.
Such as?
They're wanting to swap out the old conceptual site planning exhibit B with the new one.
Okay.
And this one has all the details. Importantly, they'd like to introduce a water feature throughout the development as an amenity, would include fountains, and I think that they have some drawings and some other perspective to give you on that. Those are the biggest things, but because it's not all there yet, as much as I can recommend is that you approve the site plan, or not the site plan, the application for the PUD major amendment. We will bring this back, if approved, we'll bring this back to the next meeting with an ordinance, presuming that we get everything put together in its final form.
Okay, now, when you bring it back, it will have all the considerations that the planning commission attached to it?
Yes.
Yes.
You'll have an accounting of all the different things that I found that needed to change, plus the additional recommendations of the planning commission, and you'll be able to see what we had at that time, what we have, and you can see that they all are tied together properly.
Okay, so we're talking about forty percent rock or brick, and the rest, and the remainder in a masonry-type siding? Did they specify anything in particular on that?
Uh, no trade names, but there are some different terms that they were using, and I think the architect would be in a better position to give you samples of materials they're contemplating using and describing these cementitious fiber products.
Okay, we'd probably be in order for that now, then.
Could I have a clarification, Eric? We're not ready to act upon three and four of the agenda because the documents are just not ready.
That is correct. Only the first item of the three, in my opinion, is ready for their consideration.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mayor. Can I, may I ask my question?
Sure.
Okay. How many times have, and I'm not, and I have the utmost respect for you, so I don't, I'm not blaming anybody. There are times we have stuff put on our agenda to act on today, and it's put off till next week, or it's put off two weeks from now. And, you know, there are definitely people here to discuss this particular development. I'm, I'm trying to figure out here, why is it that we have cases like this, where knowing that this was coming up, knowing that we had a planning commission meeting on this on Wednesday? What's, what's the problem? Where was the breakdown?
It is certainly in order for us to discuss all the details of what they're proposing. This would just be the application. There was a unique timeline on this one. There's a quirk in my schedule in that I got no applications for my regular meeting for March. This one came in a little bit late.
And I'm not blaming you, Eric, I understand that. I wouldn't blame, I'm not blaming you.
To be accommodating of the need, the particular needs of this developer and their schedule for contractor availability, financing, things like this. We did accept this and ask that the planning commission chair call a special meeting, and he was willing to do so, and we were able to get a quorum. In fact, all five planning commissioners were available to meet, and they did, on Wednesday. They can describe their particular circumstances better than I can, but we've had a history, a long history of being accommodating to the specific needs for timelines for a development standpoint.
Eric, this might be a good time. I want to qualify for those folks that showed up to discuss this. This zoning was approved by the city council in October of 2013, so the site has been approved and zoned for multifamily use. We can't take that away. That's a done deal. So what we can discuss is site plan and things of that nature. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
So basically, it's going to be apartments no matter what?
It's going, it's going to...
All we're going to discuss is what the apartment's going to look like?
It's going, it's going to be, it's going to be there, and so we were discussing with the developer, so just want to make sure we're all cognizant of that fact.
Eric, I remember, I remember, what year was that, Mayor, of the month?
October of 2013, I believe, could have been, I believe it was October.
There it is, dated October 18th, yes, sir. I remember when the developer who is here presently, and I, unfortunately, I want to apologize for missing the work session we had to discuss this particular project. And I remember the developer standing right there with some conceptual drawings, telling the council up here, I remember, because I came, saying that what you see is what you get. What you're, what you have here is what you're going to get in the concepts. And I looked through the amendments, and that's not what that council had voted to approve. There are some major changes, just not a few little ones, there are some major ones.
There are, there were initial set of perspective drawings that were in an interim version of the PUD, and I believe those were presented to planning commission and city council. There were also some other draft architectural type drawings, but they, I don't know that they were prepared by an architect. Those were not included in any submittal that I was able to find. When they did come back to us after some changes in the first part 2014, they specifically removed all of that specificity. And what they accepted, that we requested at the time, is that they come back through this process and show you precisely the new plans with the new architect, and they had to impress you enough so that you would say that this is the quality that you require for this project.
But you understand the zoning was changed, and like, like Mayor so correctly pointed out, that, you know, this zoning's been changed, but that zoning was changed based on concepts that were brought before the council, saying that it was going to be this type of quality or look just like this?
Actually, the initial approval was just the application. It was conditioned. The actual approval was the ordinance in the first part 2014, and that's the document that had no specificity.
Of the, to approve the zoning changes?
Correct.
So what was approved then, October 18th, 2013?
That was what they proposed in the first place. They did have some concept plans.
Okay.
But again, those were removed prior to the council approving.
So based on that, that started the ball rolling to changing the zoning, and then...
Yes, now we're changing the project.
Well, are we changing the project, Eric, or are we changing the design of the project?
Changing the...
Multifamily use is what it was zoned for.
I stand corrected.
So we're not changing multifamily use. That's what, there was some opposition to this, and that was what the opposition was for.
By ordinance, they are legally entitled to develop a multifamily...
Now, they could build that well, but you said there was nothing attached to that as to what the concept was going to be as far as what appearance and that sort of thing.
Correct.
So they have to come back to council.
Yep.
That's just the way it works. Okay, I wanted to just clarify that.
Thank you, sir.
So we're, okay, what were we going to move to? We...
Well, generally, you have the applicant make a presentation, let...
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
What I have up on the screen is not the actual PUD documents. This is the detailed site plan that the technical advisory committee will see on Wednesday, the planning commission will see on the 20th of April, and then this would, if approved tonight, the PUD detailed site plan will come back on the 27th of this next one.
So what we're going to vote on tonight is whether or not to increase the height, and whether or not, and how we're going to set the masonry standards. So let's, I think as far as council and as far as the owner of the project or the architect would like to speak on that, let's talk about that. And then we have several people that showed up tonight, I think, that wishes to speak. We can just let these folks speak on their concerns, I guess, but let's, let's get through the technical stuff, and then we'll open it up for public discussion. But tonight then, public, tonight then, discussion from, from the, from the folks that's building this then are going to be on the increase in the height and on the setting of the masonry standard, because that's what we vote on tonight, right? Okay, and then, then we can allow the public to weigh in. Sound like the way to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, generally, the applicant is allowed twenty minutes to make their presentation and reserve ten minutes to perhaps answer any questions that are raised by the public. And then, anybody that others, that people who want to speak on it generally limit to thirty minutes there, and that's usually divided up, however it falls out, so.
Okay, well, we're going to do public discussion and a whole separate thing.
Right, there's that, but...
Okay.
So we have, let the applicant explain the project, let people say what they think.
They get equal amount of time.
Please state your...
Is what you're saying.
Right, right.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor Patrick. Counsel, my name's Kevin Jordan, I'm with Black Gold Group. I am the developer, same applicant that was here a year and a half ago. I have with me Larry Kestner, Architects Collective. Larry is our architect. Glenn Ferguson back here, who's my associate with Ferguson Multifamily, multifamily developer. And Dick Sudoff. Dick is a little bit of the tail wagging the dog, why we made some of these changes. Dick's principal and owner of First Commercial Services, been in the real estate business here since about thirty-five years, and his, his career's been exclusively in multifamily, brokerage and consulting for twenty-five years. He was engaged by us to do a market study, which is what led to some of these proposed changes that we made. Just a little bit of background, and I am the responsible party in terms of for the requested hurry-up schedule, and I hate that, I don't like being asked to hurry up, but we did have some compelling reasons, and Eric has been nothing but wonderful to work with, and again, appreciate both the planning commission and the council in that regard. Our specifics are that we are trying to get financing wrapped up. We have our equity raise, trying to get our financing put together on our forty-two million dollar project, as well as, just as importantly, get a slot with a qualified contractor. We're down to two contractors. Both of them are in the process of finishing up projects, and one in specific is going to be moving to another project soon, so we're trying to get them slotted. As you, as you all may be aware, multifamily's very hot right now, and the contractors that are qualified to do this are few and far between, so we're trying to hit the, thread the needle, so to speak, so the timing of that's very critical. And again, appreciate the indulgence of Eric and the council in terms of considering splitting the baby, because yes, we're not ready for a full approval of the ordinance, but what I need to do is make sure I've got pricing and have a concept approved. So if we've got the concept of our site plan approved, and if we've gotten the things approved tonight that Eric spoke of in terms of the exterior elevations, and I can do takeoffs for those remaining exterior items and get my prices wrapped up. In terms of the comment of a counselor steward, and I appreciate that, I hold people accountable, I like being held accountable, we do feel like we're, what you see is what you get, and we actually feel like we're upgrading the complex quite a bit. I will pass these around. These are the detailed renderings that you all had approved from a year ago. And some of those did have, in fact, clay tile shingles on the, on the clubhouse, or excuse me, on the apartment, some of them had shingles, but you will notice that the exterior of these was largely hardy board, by name, actually. And there was some split-faced rock at the bottom, which is honestly not the look of a product that we determine we want. It's a less expensive product than either brick or faux stone, but it's just... But it's just not the look that we're looking for. So we feel like in every instance, we're not only spending more money, but we're high grading the product. I will say that, and I want, I'd like Mr. Sudoff to come and speak for a few moments of my allotted time. Because again, kind of getting the cart before the horse, we didn't start drawing these modifications, including the water feature that you see here, or the architectural shingles, or the look with the stone and brick and masonry, until we got the results back from his preliminary studies. Including frankly, the four stories. Because has always been our promise and our commitment when we got this approved initially, we want to have a luxury product. That word's overused. Honestly, I can take you to multifamily projects right now in the metroplex that use the word. Words are meaningless. But we're going to have very high-end interior products, which I know is not your domain, but granite, high-end faucets and light fixtures and all these. For a very good reason. It's because I import them for another business. I met Brett and David at my project at Grand Lake. I've got 14 houses completed now. And we started out frankly with another cementitious fiber product, certainty. We have now switched to hardy board. And I want to negotiate with these guys on the price, so I'll probably fall short of saying we're going to use hardy board. But we will use hardy board or a comparable product that your staff would approve. And honestly, it's the best product. I just wish they didn't act like they knew it. But it is, it is a great product, and we're, we're limited to it. But what, what we've come back with in terms of the layout, is this is the existing pond above this line right here. We may or may not, as of right now...
Do you want a pointer? Pleasure.
Yeah. I don't know. I'm scared of those things. You can, you can point from there probably, Patrick. From this square right here is existing, and I always get this word wrong, Jared, full retention or full? Total retention. This is full of water, and it's pretty deep, and it's pretty high-quality water. And it's stayed fairly low. It is, it is probably an eyesore frankly, in some ways. We intend to make that an amenity by being good neighbors, if we don't acquire rights goods, by being good neighbors with the people and getting rid of some of the trash around and cleaning it up. In addition, one of the, one of the designs that Larry's brought us from, once he turned another... Water cells. I mean, I've done, so have I lost in Jeans and Bigsby and Ocon Arrow with the past dozen years. And if you've got a lot on the water itself, we believe, I was sitting over on the Arkansas River at restaurants. But our intention is to add additional water here that will extend to this pond or where we die. And so, we've got commercial park for a land, almost five acres, right at five acres. 56,000 square feet of buildable space, I believe, Larry. And this is not our configuration. This is kind of put up here. But our goal, the highest and best use economically, and what we feel like there's void in the market right now, is high in restaurants. It could also be retail. But we envision Los Cabos, Waterfront Grill, these kind of restaurants down here. Because for all practical purposes, and you know, I'm proud to be a, of doing something in Bigsby. But from everybody up here, this is South Tulsa as well. And we think there's not much fine dining down this direction, so we want to be a draw from that. So by going with the four stories, which we're doing because we think it connotes luxury products, we made a commitment at the planning commission the other night that we will put at least one elevator with what Dick told us since then. You know, again, we're still processing that. But we will probably elevator all of these units across here. Everything in the dark, if you can see that, the dark from this slide, is four-story. And we will not have a four-story walk-up, like in walking up four stories. Every four-story unit here will either be elevator served or will be a townhouse. We can have a townhouse on top of the townhouse, or we could have flat, flat townhouse. And what I mean by that, third and fourth story is an interior stairway. So you can huff and puff to get to your third story that you don't have to climb up to get ready to go there. So that's, but that's a, that's one that has not been done in town, to my knowledge. Larry's done in other parts of the country, and they sell well. They lease well. Particularly along, along a water feature. And we envision some type of gondola-type thing reminiscent of Riverwalk in San Antonio or, or, gosh, Oklahoma City, what's it called?
Brick town.
Sorry, yeah. Where actually you could use it. These are about 40 feet wide down here. And so, we, I don't have the percentage, but between the other ponds, a high percentage of our units will be on the water. These will all have the otter bombs, the fancy fountains that are recirculating water. We may even wind up to recirculate in the back up here to keep it, keep it clean. And so, that's a, that's a great feature. So in order to, frankly, in order to accomplish this, and to re-capture some of the commercial, which helps us economically, and we believe is the best interest of the city, the four stories were necessary. We're not doing the four stories to get the water. We're not doing the four stories to save money because it's more expensive. Nor are we necessarily doing it to regain our little bit of commercial. It's the highest-end look and feel and market niche that we, that we think we can come across. We've been talking with Eric. We spoke last Friday. We certainly got safety concerns, so to the extent that this is deep water, right off the edge, we will have it fenced. If not, it will, it will have a gentle slope. I've got a water feature in my project at Grand Lake. And it's got kind of a kid catcher where it goes very gently. Kind of a zero entry type thing on a pool, as you may have seen. So you would have to jump out several steps in order to get in deep enough water even for a small child. So we'll be, I think we've met codes there, but we're first of all about safety. So those are the details yet to be worked out that we have to, that we have to work out. We have, as may very well be pointed out, we have reduced what we initially represented as the size of our clubhouse. Again, talking with Larry, we want the biggest clubhouse in town, about 4,000 feet gets it. We'd initially thought about having a couple of, in our clubhouse, a couple of guest apartments upstairs that we could rent out for residents that have guests coming in, or corporate apartments. As we got into the depths and the detail of this, that is an issue with fair housing and ADA, which regard having those there. So we feel like we've got a wonderful clubhouse. We've got two pools here. We're going to have an incredible area here that looks out over the pond from both the clubhouse and the pool and cabana and the coffee bar out here. So there's really going to be nothing like, like this in Tulsa, in the metroplex, as far as that goes in Oklahoma City. And the most exciting part, and I'm going to wait for Dick, but what we feel like we've got here in the suburbs is something that people might be able to get downtown. The trouble is that we think we're seeing it Encore and a few other nicer South Tulsa apartment projects, is that they don't want to be downtown. Okay? Dick, can you give us about three minutes to get there? We're here, so, give us the punchline on the market for the four stories that you went to.
Well, the market study, feasibility study that we're doing...
Yes, sir. Please, the folks at home can't pick you up unless you're at the mic.
Oh, sorry.
We are on live TV.
Okay. The study that we're doing is primarily to determine what the market is, what type of product, the acceptability of that product, and also who the potential residents are. And one of the things that we found, that we're doing a little bit differently on this one, is we're interviewing people all over town. So it's conceivable that, you know, you may see one of our people at a restaurant, or at a store, or somewhere else, asking you questions about your desires and your beliefs in living in Bigsby. One thing that we've found so far is that people that live in South Tulsa and Bigsby have children. And these people have grandparents. And a lot of the grandparents are selling their homes. They may even live in another state. And they want to come down, live close to the grandchildren, so they can pick the grandchildren up from school and let the parents work. So the design, and this is part of the four-story situation, the design is to create a building that's secure, unlike a typical garden apartment where you have a walk-up situation and so on. That's the reason for the elevators also, so that people my age can get up and down easily. But primarily, it's so that a person, maybe a widow or divorced lady or something like that, can live in a building in the suburbs, not downtown, that is a secure building. So the four-story accomplishes that much better than does a on-the-ground garden apartment. I think that's about all I have. Do you have anything else you want to...
No, thank you. We may have, we may have questions. Come back. Thank you. Again, I think to summarize that point, and we discovered this over the past year and a half as we've been evaluating this project, looking at Encore, when honestly, when you shop the project, which is what developers do, and send people in to ask questions, the property managers all were in awe of the number of me, the empty nesters that were there. And so, we found that, and Dick certainly has discerned that as he goes around talking to waitresses in restaurants and talking to property managers and other. We're excited about that market. And one of the things that, that you can read any number of places, there's been more change in the apartment market, apartment-townhouse market in the last three years than there has been in the last 30 years. And that's largely to do with the phenomena of no longer a single-family home guaranteed to be your estate-building type tool. This is true for nobody better than the 50s, 45 to 65 to 75. Because they, they may consider being tied down to a home liability. We may go through a cycle when they don't think they can get rid of it. Living in a really nice apartment complex within a mile or two of the mega center of highest socioeconomic center in South Tulsa and Bigsby is the place that many of these folks want to be to be around their grandkids and their kids, et cetera. So that plus young professionals, my, my children's age, late 20s and 30s, don't necessarily see buying a house as a good gig. So we feel like with the socioeconomics we're going to have and the rents we're going to charge, it's going to be a pretty substantial, it's going to be, it's going to charge cost about 25%. And we can show you the numbers, more to live here than it would to pay your taxes, insurance, 80% mortgage on a, on a home, the average size that's in our community. So we feel like that's, that's a positive in terms of bringing the type of clientele, the type of citizens, people that are responsible people, that are earning wages, maybe they're retired, they've got good socioeconomic standards, and they're not the group that causes a lot of crimes. And we, of course, do criminal background checks, credit checks. And the average resident, as a rule of thumb, on the income evaluation is going to be making three times what the rent's going to be, which is probably going to be averaging 1,100, $1,200 a month. So in summary, again, we apologize for bifurcating the process and asking for partial approval. We'll be coming back with a balance of it, but we're trying to get enough granularity, enough details to get a contractor's hard number and get our financing approved immediately. And we are, we are asking for three things. We're asking for the four-story, which is really a two-foot increase over what's, what's available. But, you know, we certainly intend to put the four stories based on what we found in the marketplace. We're asking for an approval of the masonry requirement or the masonry standard that we've asked for, which is 40% faux rock and brick. We've got samples back here of some of those products. And then the balance would be a cementitious fiber product, either, what company you guys with? Either Hardy Board, James Hardy, or one acceptable staff. And then lastly, we're asking for, for approval of the shadow-type shingles on the, on the main buildings. And I've got pictures here. I'll be glad to pass around. But I've got houses that I've built in the last 10 years, that as we, as we studied this more, we don't, we don't want somebody to get hurt with clay tile roof falling off of, off of buildings. This is Johnny Corino down the house, down the road here. And I've got clay tiles are doing the same thing. We're in a freestyle area. And these things falling off a three- or four-story roof could be pretty serious. And we think 500 feet off of Memorial, this is not a cheap product. Jared Hicks at the planning commission was very impressed with this. This is probably within $15 a square of what clay tile costs. So this is not a cost savings deal. We are going to put clay or concrete tile on the clubhouse. But this is, is what we're asking for on the, on the houses. Because that's, or on the apartment buildings, because that's pretty important, the insurance. Insurance would be an issue if we've got that three or four stories up. Okay, I'm done. Can I have my other three minutes later if I need it, Patrick?
I think you can. I've just got a quick question.
Okay.
Don't want to step on the council's questions that they may have for you. But the planning commission, for a call, unanimously recommended approval with certain conditions. Are you happy with those conditions, or is that something you're willing to comply with?
Yes.
Including staff's recommendation?
Yes.
What are those conditions?
I think that's, that's probably better articulated by Eric.
There were a number of them, some substantive, some cosmetic, most of them cosmetic. There are a lot of things, because of the fine grain of detail on the site plan, and the fact that they're asking to swap out the old site plan for the new one, the more detailed, the more review comments, things that don't fit together that have to be moved around. The substantive ones, the biggest one was complying with fire chief and fire recommendations as far as the building height. 50 feet is what they recommended, maximum. And 50 feet is what the planning commission came back with recommending as well. And any additional accommodations to the needs from a fire protection sampling? There's some design changes that they asked for. And then also, they did ask, and it is now in the draft PUD document, to specify the percentages. 40% was the first time that I think it was officially proposed, was at the planning commission meeting. 40% traditional masonry, the balance being cementitious fiber. And they did also, the developer agreed that one elevator could be added. The planning commission said, well, we recommend that there be at least one. Those are the biggest substantive ones that I can recall.
So Eric, each one of these floors will have sprinkler heads in them?
Yeah, that's my code, right, Larry? Sprinklers, sprinklers will be on every floor.
Yeah.
Eric, I, and you may have articulated this, and I was doing something else, but the specific, specific masonry balances, I know it's 40% masonry throughout the entire development, but specific amounts on a specific building will be done at the, in reserve to the planning commission and the council at the detailed site plan approval time.
Yes. This, this application that they're asking for conditional approvals sets the framework. And they'll be coming back, if approved tonight, they'd be coming back probably in two weeks for reapproval by ordinance. So you get another chance to look at this. One of the things that staff had recommended in the report is that when they're varying the relative proportions of masonry and masonry alternatives, that we have the most masonry content on the exterior-facing ones, the ones that, that face Memorial. And the interior-facing elevations would be less traditional masonry. So we'll see more detail in two weeks and even more at the very end of the process of the detailed site plan, 27th of February.
So we talk about a 40% minimum on the rock or stone. That's per building, not per project, right?
Well, that would be the average across all of...
The average?
Yes.
Okay. I'd hate to see a building stuck in the back to have none.
That is some, one other detail that could be added at this point.
Okay. I'd hate to, yeah.
We can have a very absolute baseline for all buildings.
Okay, that's, that's, he's going to bring that back.
Generally speaking, I mean, these here, that of course are still more than 500 feet away from Memorial, but they'll be visible from the entrance of the clubhouse and the commercial land here. These will probably have more. It's like on many houses, they'll put, you know, brick on the front or three sides, and then, and then something on the back. Whereas some of these, particularly on the interiors, would have less. But I think, I think that, Larry, we would not go below 20 anywhere. Is that correct? 25, okay. That would be our plan. So obviously, that varies how much you can add, about 40 on the face of some of these.
Can you talk about faux brick? I caught on that. You said faux brick?
That was brought up the other night. Faux brick's an architectural term. They're full brick, four-inch brick.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I asked the same question in Oklahoma, but yeah, these are obviously thin for display purposes, but the brick will be full.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah.
Full brick.
I see displays, want to make sure that's not the actual full product right there.
Be full brick.
I have a, I have a question about your hesitation. What was your last name again?
Jordan.
Mr. Jordan, I met you about a year and a half ago. You talked about, I just need some clarity.
Okay.
The restaurants that are, that are coming, I think that's, that's... Is there public access to those restaurants? Or is those restaurants primarily for exclusivity of the apartment or the multifamily inhabitants?
No, absolutely, public access, that access. If you can recall, the old red brick houses along here right now, this boulevard is pretty close, right up over the top of that. And so, it will be our plan to put in this boulevard early on with the turnstile and the clubhouse, and probably a first building with models. And then, once we get the apartment project going and leasing, then we would lease to, or sell to restaurants and retailers. But no, these will be totally, these will be totally, I mean, obviously, more so for the outside market than for the apartments. But yeah, it will be available for the apartments as well, which is one of the draws.
as well, which is one of the draws for the crowd. Dick's excited about the people that have more discretionary income to go to find out the places.
Have you looked at with the location of this development, one of my major concerns, again, is possibly infrastructure in that particular intersection. Has that been researched or looked at, or is the city even thinking about expanding the infrastructure in the area to accommodate the traffic flow from this particular development? If it takes off, which, you know, if it takes off where they say that, you're going to have a lot of people in there. So, I'm just trying to figure out if that's been looked at and addressed.
Hi, Jerry.
To short answer the question, yes, we have that partly Memorial corridor traffic study that we've been underway for about the last year and a half. And we looked at this area knowing that it had been approved zoning-wise for multifamily. So, traffic coming in here, even traffic from the west side, anticipating commercial development, they used our comprehensive plan in coming up with what improvements they recommended along the Memorial corridor. I'd go back and pull that study out there. In fact, just this week, they emailed the draft final copy, and I've not had a chance to go through that yet, but it's a study we're looking at with ODOT, with the city of Tulsa, that we're looking at that whole Memorial corridor from the Creek Turnpike down to one hundred and seventy-first street. What do we need to do next five years, ten years, and twenty years? And that study did take into account what might happen here. I can't tell you offhand what exactly, but it didn't anticipate this development.
Is the construction going to start from the creek and work its way south? Is that what I could?
Not necessarily.
I don't want to assume.
Yeah, not necessarily. What, it would tend to follow the heaviest traffic. And so, what we do have is, you know, ODOT recently widened the six lanes from one hundred and first down to one hundred eleventh. And then the next heaviest segment of traffic, one hundred eleventh down to one hundred twenty-first. And they do show that going, additional lanes in the future. And I'd go back and we'd go through that full study when that's done to show you what time horizon they anticipate, because they've used those traffic projections that Incog have. When do we think we'll max out on traffic capacity, two lanes versus three lanes? And those are some of the things that they've got in that study. I can't address those right now, but we do have those looking at them.
If this doesn't get approved tonight, what is your next, what would you mean, what's your next plan?
Hadn't really considered that. I mean, I, obviously, I have the land, have, I forget what we have in it, but we've got a lot of land there, so we obviously will continue to try to work on this. But, I'm not going to kid you, I mean, we live in a state where oil has dropped from a hundred and fifty dollars. And the, we have two lenders that are both still pursuing us, but I've done real estate for long enough to know that delays could make lenders more gun-shy and thirty, sixty days down the road, I'm not sure we would still be able to finance the project. That's, I mean, that's just a reality I have to deal with, you know? We're putting twenty-five percent equity in the deal, so it's pretty heavily capitalized. But, yeah, I mean, there's a, and frankly, we're glad we're here and not in Broken Arrow, because there's a lot of apartments being built in Broken Arrow, and there's none like this with the amenity load that we have. In summary, I would say though, that, and again, I appreciate your perspective on getting the benefit of your bargain, but with going from about ninety percent Hardy board with split-face block to forty percent stone and brick, and then with the water features and all, and all of those things, our project has gone up in cost, not to mention the labor, but just the project we're proposing and the finish we're proposing. Four stories more difficult, more expensive to construct. I was kind of surprised, because I thought you were pouring fewer pads, but that's not the way it works, particularly when you add elevators. So, we're not, we have not cheapened the project at all, it's gone the other way.
What are you proposing on the east side, along Fry Creek, that backs up to the residential?
East side back there will be, if we approve the four-story, we've dropped our three-story permission, if you will, in the previous PUD, and that will be garages down below with a single story above it, so two stories total. And half of those will be where you can drive into the garage and go up on an interior stairway. Those are great for seniors, for empty nesters, as well as single mothers living along with small children. So, those have done very well in other markets. Candidly, one of the things that I'm still unhappy with is, we still don't have enough garages, I think, for the clientele that we're going after. We're going to add some garages, so we will probably submit that for your review, but I can quantify what those costs are. What I'm hoping to accomplish tonight are the things that will allow me to know what this is going to cost with regards to the exterior finish, my earth moving and those type of things, you know? And beyond that, the interior finishes are designated, the civil, there's no rock here, so we pretty much know what that's going to be. So, the approvals we're seeking will allow us to move forward.
Okay. So, on the, again, on the exterior, I'm sorry, I'll let you sit down too.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We have the rock and brick, the faux rock and brick, and then we have the approved siding.
And these aren't necessarily the colors?
I understand. I just have to ask about the siding. What percent fly ash will that siding?
Zero.
Will they withstand hurricane-force winds up to a hundred and fifty mile an hour like the?
I will, I will make it easy for you. We will use James Hardy siding.
Now, that's not a requirement.
Or, no, I understand that. Or something that the staff would approve.
Okay.
And again, I told you my own experience, I've switched from another brand because of the very things that Dennis talked about, that things break, you know, and they didn't look very good. So, we've got three houses that I consider inferior.
Is this, is this kind of what you're wanting to do? Because this was in my book, too.
That was shown to, this is a project in Jinks, and that shows the Hardy board material there, and one of the things-
Is this the Hardy board on top of the brick?
Right here, yeah. And it shows that, you know, visually, you really can't tell it from stucco. And I don't know, Larry had a sample here, I don't know if you guys did, Brett, but we will be going with a stucco finish. I don't think they had that sample of that as opposed to the woodgrain finish. And you also didn't mention, because David's a good salesman, he wants to sell the bat of Hardy that goes here, but that doesn't fit our architectural style. Larry has specked a mechanical joiner that goes here, rather than putting the tar paper behind it, you mentioned, we think this is a better way to do it, so there's a mechanical joiner that goes, these slip into it.
An H brace?
The other one, that's, I'm learning something, that's correct. And those join together, and then that's caulked. And so, when it's painted, you see a couple of painted joints there in that picture.
I see some, yes, sir, I see some joints underneath the window.
Yeah, you can kind of tell where it is, it's pretty faint, but, and frankly, there's flexure in buildings, you know, it's going to happen. And with stucco, I've dealt with this for many years, it cracks, it doesn't give. And also, as we know, with stucco, it's applied in the field with eighty-degree variance in temperature by sometimes people that don't know what they're doing, whereas this is in a factory. But, if the building flexes, this is going to flex with it, because both ends are capped in this H brace, so.
This here just looks like a regular apartment complex, and this is being marketed as something that's very upscale? You're saying it's going to be different than this?
Well, it's going to be a different look, it's going to be four stories, it's going to have elevator or elevators, it's going to have this water feature, it's going to have a whole host of different products inside.
But the exterior is pretty true.
That's probably thirty, that's probably thirty percent masonry, as most apartments are.
You have forty?
Yeah, we have forty. We submitted thirty originally at the work session, and we're told that it would be probably more acceptable at forty. So, that's what we've agreed to. And frankly, this, the roofing, the tile we're going for, even though it is four stories up, is about thirty percent upgrade, according to Jared Hicks, over what the normal asphalt shingles are going to go on a apartment project. But it's got, there's some of this at TU, it's really attractive, and we'll probably be using red, even redder than that back there. And it does give the shadow look, which is kind of like a cement or clay tile effect, but a lot safer, it's not that much cheaper. I'm sensitive about thinking I'm trying to cheap out, so that's not our reason.
Very good.
Anything else? Okay, thanks.
Is there any more discussion by council?
Let the people talk.
Okay, let's let the people talk. Our first one on the list is Brent King.
Speakers are limited to five minutes in the hearing.
Very good, well, thank you, Mayor.
Please state your name and address, sir.
My name is Brent King, one-two-two-three-four, South eighty-fifth East Avenue.
Thank you.
Otherwise known as, next to last lot there on the east side of the property.
Okay.
The questions I have are honestly, it sounds like a little bit of water under the bridge now. I was not aware that this had been approved a year and a half ago for the purpose of multi-unit dwelling. I guess, at this point, a few questions I do have. Number one, what is the plan off of one hundred and twenty-first in this property? As the council probably knows, it currently narrowed down from four lanes to two, right before the fire department. Is there any plans?
It's known commercial, probably office, but it could be red.
Are you talking about city plans or developer plans?
I'm talking about any of the road infrastructure through that area. Right now, it's forty-five mile an hour speed limit, there's families coming in and out of there, you know, it's a very, it's an up and coming area, and I can see adding, how many units are in this?
Three hundred and seventy-five.
Three hundred and seventy-five times, at least three hundred and seventy-five cars, that's a lot of ingress and egress every day.
We're going to let our city manager discuss that for you. Jared Cottle, for the record.
Currently, we do not have any infrastructure plans for one hundred and twenty-first. The focus of this is in and out on Memorial. What we would do is, you know, in the event they come back with some other future development on one hundred and twenty-first, we have to need to evaluate at that time what those traffic impacts are. I think that what they're showing right now is a emergency access out to one hundred and twenty-first street. And temporary, if I recall right, that was, it was a temporary emergency access that will be there on one hundred and twenty-first, but then, when that does develop, commercial, office, whatever happens to go there, we'll have to reevaluate at that time and look at what requirements they have to have.
Do you have a couple other questions? The first of those behind, on that east side, on the, I guess it would be on the west side of Fry Creek, what is the plan for fencing or some sort of?
Landscape?
Landscaping?
Landscape, or I'm asking landscape, or, but Eric, don't we have a landscape requirement?
Yes, we do have a requirement in their PUD right now that they do have to have screening and also landscaping. There are two different sections on the west side of the Fry Creek tributary and the east side. The details have yet to be hammered out, but what I recommended is that be no less than the upgraded screening that we achieved with the previous PUD a few years ago.
Now, those are going to be garages facing the east, right?
Correct, garages with one unit above them.
Okay, okay. But I can certainly understand, I can certainly understand why the folks east of that ditch would want some landscaping.
To add a little bit of detail to that comment, the last one I recall was that there was going to be a berm on the west side of the drainage ditch, and the fence would be on top of that, so giving its maximum effect.
But that, those requirements are coming later.
Yeah, it's in the recommendations.
And Mr. Mayor, Larry just confirmed it when we turned into Eric just today, there are no windows on the back of those apartments above the garages. They're faux windows, but not real windows.
So, they're not going to be able to look off into?
Which is a change.
Backyards of other folks, okay. That would be.
It's a good thing.
Also, and I've lived in that home for nine years, almost to the day now, the question I have is regarding the flood zone. I know probably four years ago, a previous owner of the property had done some work, and they really just turned dirt, and it got all over the homes, but other than that, I didn't see any accomplishment there. So, I guess the question is, at the time that that work was being done, that was a flood zone. And I'm asking the question, is that's, is it currently lifted out of the flood zone? Is it still in it? And if so, is there additional dirt work that needs to be done to alleviate that issue?
That's another engineer.
Yes, let me go, and the west bank of that creek was in the flood plain. And what the project, and with FEMA, it goes through two phases. One is a, what they call a conditional letter map revision phase, they turn their plans in, and really you get an approval from FEMA that says, if you do this, we will take these areas out of the flood plain. After the work is done, they come back, verify through a certified survey that the work was done, and what the intent was, was to widen the west side of the channel, take the material out of the channel and bring it up, to bring the low-lying areas out of flood plain. In essence, that was the project. They did come back at one time to get that certified. The information that they provided us was incomplete and did show a few deficiencies. I think Mr. Jordan's aware, there's some additional work that does need to be done before they can file the LOMR. So, the first half, the concept, has been approved by FEMA, it's just going back and confirming that yes, that work was indeed finished. So, they'll have that step to verify that that dirt work has been complete, and we will ask for that from them.
You would be verifying it would be the last first effect to the east?
Correct. What they did was essentially a water balance. If we add this much development, how much bigger does the channel have to be to accommodate that water? So, they just pulled it until they reach that balance point.
So, that is an issue that this, the city and UZ engineer will kind of police then?
Correct. That's still something that, an issue that we have to get through to act with FEMA.
I'd like to ask Mr. King a question, if you don't mind. As, I'm glad you showed up, since you're a resident over there, so you can kind of voice. And you don't have to answer this. Showing that they're doing a two-story with a garage and a one unit above that, is that, would that be preferred to you as a resident that backs up to that? Or would you prefer that the fourth story be reduced and add the third story on that east side? Because it seems like the peers, the developers, taken the third story off of that row and moved it over to those buildings as a fourth story.
I would say that would be preference.
Am I wrong, Mr. Jordan?
Sorry?
That was what my take on that was.
It's not one for one, but yes, that is part of the-
That was something you gave up.
Well, we're trying to create a different plot out over here, and also had consideration, because that was probably one of the most discussed issues when this was approved a year ago, with three-story units here with windows facing the homes. So, yeah, we-
Well, you had alluded to the fact that the fourth story, if you didn't get the fourth story, you may have to move that area to a third story, so it appeared to me that you were kind of giving up to get one.
Well, just one neighbor in the neighborhood, I would say yes, that would be preferable than having three stories.
And I would ask you, just what your preference would be?
That would be, and I guess, to that end, how many windows per unit would be facing east?
None.
None, okay. So, from that perspective, you would just see what sort of material?
You would see a wall there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then one last question regarding the flood zone abatement, I guess, lack of a better word. What are you intending to do, or what's the timeline on doing that work? I mean, is it six months of dirt work to accomplish that? Because that's a long stretch there, to try to continue to remove dirt from the edge of the creek and move it over.
Dirt work at all, yeah, I'm fine.
And I've probably looked at the cross-sections more recently than Mr. Jordan, but it was cert, what they had were a few low areas here, a few low areas there. For the most part, the channel was where it needed to be. What they didn't do was distribute the dirt on the west side where it needed to be. So, that's something they would probably pick up in their grading plan, is go back in and fill those low areas. And that was really the biggest problem they had, is they had some areas out towards the middle that were still as low as they were before, and that obviously didn't take it out of flood plain, so that was one of our comments. It's, in summary, it's fairly minor work.
Well, it may be minor, but it's a lot of work for the people that live there and have already gone through this once, four years ago. I would just petition from my own perspective that this work be, this approval be postponed until this work is done. I mean, it seems a little cart before the horse to go ahead and say, well, let's go ahead and approve this work, when they haven't done the dirt work. If that's something that's part of the plan, it's in writing, and everybody's comfortable with that, I guess, we don't really have a lot to say. On another front, when this was approved a year and a half ago, none of the residents were notified. Now, I was notified about this meeting via mail. I received a letter that said that this meeting was to occur March twenty-fifth on a Monday. That was confusing, so I'm not sure how that was a portion, but I didn't know if it was the twenty-third or the thirtieth, so maybe not nitpicking here, but I'm a little confused by that, and I was frustrated by the reality that, you know, something that otherwise had official notification didn't have the right date, so.
Backing into that, that notice was for the Planning Commission hearing, that was last Wednesday.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And that was the twenty?
Yeah, and it said Monday, the twenty-fifth, that's where the confusion.
That was the Planning Commission.
Did you say you did not get notified when the zoning?
No, this is, the only notification I have received on this property as to any work that was done was, I believe, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and it was to, there was a previous owner of the property, and at the time, there was different, it was a completely different agenda. The same discussion about the flood plain came up, and he had a similar plan to abate that issue. a similar plan to abate that issue. It was actually held at the fire station on 121st. And there was two residents, myself and my neighbor that was here today, that attended that. We asked questions, and that was it. And that's the only time I've been notified about this property, until a week ago, so.
Somebody had to know, because I remember we had a lot of discussion about it, because that's how the windows in the back got.
Must have been worded out.
Probably about four or five people here that were talking about it that night. I remember that.
Eric, do you have records of mailings that went out then?
Yes, there are three forms of public notice required. You have to send those to all property owners within three hundred feet on mail. You have to post a sign on property, and you have to put in a news item. And I did all three of those things, like the multifamily. The notice has to go out for one quarter of a mile diameter from the twenty-three acres in this application. And I assure you, I did mail it.
So is it just a sep, is it a separate, just a separate letter that goes out, or what is it, or is it in the?
It's a one-page letter that talks about the date, location, and time of the meeting. It has the legal description, where you rezoned property to, and how to contact the city if they have questions.
You, you had asked the question, you, you preferred that the council put this off until the flood dirt work was done?
That would be my preference.
I think, I think the main, the main thing here is, the developer is trying to get some concepts in order to get his money in place. This is by no means a final work authorization at all. And, and again, I wanna emphasize that the flood thing is policed by our city engineer. It's not just, and, yeah, and FEMA. So you've got some pretty, you've got some pretty big dogs on your side of the fence there, so.
Thank you for your time, council.
Thank you for coming.
Mayor, may I address his first question just really quick?
Sure.
I have a follow-up question to Mr. Cottle. It was, the, even though it's an emergency access off of 121st, there's nothing prohibiting the people who would be the inhabitants of the complex to using 121st bypass Memorial via Mingo to 121st. So I, I, I think that there's gonna be huge traffic issues in that particular thoroughfare there, off of 121st. I, I don't think it'd be safe to assume they're gonna use Memorial.
Right. I, I think, I'm not sure what you all have planned for gate operations, if that would be emergency vehicles only, or if you're gonna let residents come in and off, off 121st.
I think we have to, that'd have to be too.
For emergency vehicles, but for residents coming off, in and out on 121st Street.
We would give them that option, both would have dates with the pops.
Okay. And that's why I was asking about the, the plan. You know, what plan do we have on 121st?
Right.
Okay.
Katrina Moss, you signed up next. Please state your name and address.
Katrina Moss, eighty-four hundred East one hundred and twenty-third Street. We actually live right here, off the drainage, where the entrance is.
Okay.
And we're next door to Brent King. And I wasn't really clear on the fencing along the Fry Creek. I heard two different things, building a berm and putting up landscaping, and I also heard fence. Which is it going to be, a fence or landscaping?
Who wants to tackle that area?
Do we know?
As I recall, in the last time we saw this, it was gonna, there was gonna be a berm on the west side, and on top of that would be the fence, so you have the maximum height, maximum screening. There is also required to be landscaping along that area. So all of the above, berm, fence, and landscaping.
So how will, if there will be, residents will be able to exit onto 121st, that's very busy in the morning when I leave for work and in the evening when I get home. How's that gonna affect the fire department? The fire department is right there, and they need to be able to get out. And if there's that much extra traffic?
Traffic shouldn't have to stop.
That could cause a big issue. Well, it should, but still, it's only two lanes right there. I mean, when traffic's running and gunning, when school's in, and everyone's out taking their kids to school and going to work, there's a lot of extra traffic there in the morning. And the roads aren't great.
I can speak to probably the fire chief, can also. There's lighting they put up there that'll likely stop the traffic. That would be able to, the fire department would be able to actually activate. It would stop the traffic in both, both directions.
So that's something we would do at the city.
It's already there, isn't it? They're flashing lights that the fire department can trigger when they pull over that station. I think there was one that got, we had to replace something that got hit with some debris or something, just recently.
It is currently flashing lights, but it is not a stoplight. It's just, it's currently just a caution light.
Okay.
Where we could modify that to be an actual stoplight that comes out to block the traffic.
But the fire department can actually, they can.
Activate that from a handheld device or a device in the, in the fire, fire engines.
Can they control the traffic light on Memorial from the fire station?
No, sir.
Is there any device they can get that will allow them to control it?
Absolutely. There's a device called an Opticom. And it can be placed on that to allow them to have access to that intersection.
I believe all our signals are equipped, it was all, we're already equipped with that.
Yes.
Any other question?
I just have one other comment. I just want to agree with Mr. King that we did not receive notification either about this particular zoning change. The last zoning change, or the last thing we heard about that was going into that particular land was one-story industrial storage unit, industrial office space type buildings. That's what we had heard back in two thousand eleven, when all the dirt moving was going on, that particular summer that made all of our houses filthy. That's what we heard was going in there. We, this is new information.
Well, we're gonna look into that.
I mean, I don't know what happened.
I don't know what effect it will have on this, but we'll, we'll look in. That would have been a city procedure.
I can tell you that I'm, I'm highly disappointed. We've lived there ten years, and to now be able to, our view is going to be the back of an apartment. That's horrible.
Are you the, on the tax records, your name and address is on the tax, tax records?
Yes, Eric and Katrina Moss. We bought the house in two thousand five, when there was nothing out here. So I'm, I'm disappointed in this. I really am.
I understand. I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I did wanna mention briefly something in traffic modeling, and some of it is human behavior. And when you do these nodes, and you understand that people find a path of least resistance, they'll sit and try to turn left the first time, they won't do it again. So a lot of times, what you're doing in traffic modeling is assuming that people find that path of least resistance for a certain period of time. Now, there are no, when there are no other paths, then you, then you reach that capacity limit. So what we'd expect is we expect, because there is a fairly good amount of westbound traffic today, right now. So they'll sit and wait to get in, and they won't do it again, and they'll come back out to Memorial. And that, that would really be our anticipation of what, the long term.
I'm chuckling because I always did that. I always come in and hit 121st.
Right.
When I was coming to work, so.
Right, so.
I avoided Memorial, like a plague.
Yeah. So, so some of it is, you, you do have to wait a little bit to see, let human behavior and patterns sort out, and then you see what you've got, so. But that's what we'd expect to happen, is that most people would access.
Well, you have that QuickTrip right there, too.
That's true. I was thinking about that, and that QuickTrip's gonna generate a lot of traffic.
That QuickTrip's gonna probably generate more traffic than this thing will on the corner.
And that's right turns right there.
You guys realize there's a QuickTrip going around that corner?
Yes, that's what we're about. It would generate three hundred and seventy-five families.
I don't know, you're going out here. I mean, I, I almost get hit going in front of this QuickTrip right out here, but I never get hit anywhere else. People coming in and out all constantly. When I was in there a while ago, there, I couldn't even, on the way here, I couldn't even find a place to park. There had to be, I don't know, twenty, thirty cars in there? And that's just boom, constant. So, I don't know, it's gonna generate some cars that, that, I mean, there's gonna be some.
I live behind that, it really stinks.
There's gonna be some cars there, that's for sure.
Jay Malden, you're next. Please state your full name and address.
Jay Malden, seventy-three forty-one East one nineteen Place. I would ask if the city attorney could give me a one minute, that'd be appreciated.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to refer you to page three very briefly on the staff report, if I may. I'm just kinda eating into my five minutes, I'm getting a little slack.
Could you ask a question?
Well, I, I wanted to direct your attention to the remarks that are contained here with regard to my participation in the planning commission meeting. It, it says here that I expressed a preference for elegant retail development or mini-storage over apartments for the subject property. I wanted to clarify that I understand this, the PUD eighty-one passed. And as the, Mr. Mayor, as you said earlier, that's, that's done. And I, at no time did I suggest, nor am I suggesting now, that we should attempt to pull the rug out from underneath the applicant with regard to the ability to do use unit eight multifamily. So I just wanted to clarify that. The balance of the remarks here with regard to my concerns, I think, are valid and accurate. Initially, I did not oppose PUD eighty-one. The reason I didn't oppose it was because I thought these lands were unlikely to develop as an elegant retail environment, like what we talked about on the west side of Memorial. The, the other reason is that I thought if this project came to fruition, the way that it was originally purported, particularly with the clay tile roofing, that's what put me over to the side of not opposing, just by the slightest of slight preponderances. But I thought if, if that comes off as purported, as it was originally presented, when you, you know, what you see is what you get, that that could be, that could serve as a benchmark for new development in this particular area of town, which I think we all would agree is, is economically important for our community. If it's no clay tile roof, or, then I'd, I'd say I'd rather have no roof. The qualitative standards are, are important. I'd like to direct your attention to another concern. Things been kinda glossed over here so far this evening. I'm not gonna really talk about building height. If we need to go a little bit of Scotia above the code in order to accommodate something, I mean, okay. I'm not gonna get into the masonry, because I don't have time for that. But what I haven't heard here is the fact that four stories is not in compliance with the city code. I was asked the question at the planning commission meeting, okay, if, if the building is at forty-eight feet per code, what difference does it make if it's three or four stories? Answer, the code says three. There was much discussion about this, and I think it was clarified that the code does say three. So if you approve this, you're going to be creating a precedent. I don't think it's one that's in the city's interest. If, if you allow this to happen now, it will happen again. If you would like, I would be happy to give you some plausible scenarios under which that could happen. But it's not consistent with the code. So, you know, all of this, the, the tile cost, the cost to insure it, the, the height, the stories, all of this should and could have been known, should have been ascertained at the time the original proposal came forward. And I'm concerned that we're overdriving our headlights, that we're going too fast. And I've seen that this happened before in this community, and I, there's a place that I could point to, but I'm gonna be benevolent about it and not go there. I, I think that we've seen what happens when we go too fast, and we overdrive our headlights. And allowing this exception to the code, you have exception, loophole, patchwork. Exception, loophole, patchwork. Rinse and repeat this. Do it a half million times, what do you get? The IRS tax code. I think we, one thing we can all agree, the IRS tax code is way too complex. And we don't need to take our city code one step down that road. So I would suggest to you, this really is a question of special interests versus we, the people, and our code. What do you value the most? If this is so important, why not amend the code? And then bring this back and have it be compliant with the code. That, I think, is the better way to do this. I think that is more intellectually honest. It doesn't set a precedent, and it's the best thing for the community. So in, in closing, I would tell you, I would ask you this. If you voted for this the first time, and tonight you're gonna vote no, I think, I would respectfully suggest that you provide some modicum of an explanation as to why. Conversely, if originally you voted against this, and tonight you're going to vote for this amendment, I think that same explanation would be in order.
Here in one minute, over to you.
And with that, I will thank you, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Yeah, well, I wanna ask Eric about the, so does it say that in there, that we're gonna do three stories?
Yes, across the board in our residential districts, the maximum height is forty-eight feet.
Uh-huh.
Maximum is three stories. So it would be this amendment that would allow for the fourth story.
So we're not just gonna do an exception on the height, we're doing an exception on the number of stories as well?
Yes.
But it's only two foot in height?
Yes. They're entitled up to forty-eight feet right now. One thing, this was raised at the planning commission meeting, and Mr. Malden's concern was echoed by the planning commission. So one thing that we did to address the concern about precedent, is if we were to allow this again in the future on a case-by-case basis, only through the PUD, there should be a setback, a minimum separation between the fourth story and the closest property line of a single-family residential property. In the draft I received today, they're proposing, I think, two hundred feet. So that compares to this three-story, seventy-five-foot setback that they're currently entitled to.
Mr. Malden, are you, were you done talking? Did you have more to say? Because we, we can grant him more time if he has.
I mean, I don't wanna hear the same stuff, but if you've got more to say, I'd like to hear it.
Well, my recollection from the, the planning commission meeting, and again, I don't mean to, to argue with our, our city planner, a gentleman, by the way, for whom I have the utmost admiration and respect. He does a great job. Sometimes I wonder how he does that, but I recall at the planning commission meeting that the notion was if it was five hundred feet away from a single-family residential neighborhood, that that would constitute a basis, or a rationale, or a justification for allowing this exception to the code. And I really don't think it matters if it's two hundred, three hundred, five hundred. Again, I'll go back to my IRS example. What difference does it make? It's a precedent. And if you allow it to happen, it'll probably happen again. I think it muddies the waters. Let's say, okay, if it's two hundred feet from a single-family residential, what if it's two hundred feet away from something else that you can't even contemplate right now? Some other type of, of land use that you might want to not have as close to?
Like a school or something.
There you go. I hadn't even thought of that. Like a school. Why not? The code is there for a reason. And again, all this was ascertainable, so I, I, I just, I don't understand what is so compelling. I think when we, when we, when we do something that is contrary to the code, there should be a compelling reason to do so, particularly if the circumstances in the original instance were such that they were reasonably, reasonably
I, I would like to respond to that. I, I have an inclination to support the variance, pretty much because in order for this thing to be economically feasible for the developer, and he has the right to build here, and he's gonna build, that if he didn't build the fourth story, he was gonna have to go to the backside along those folks' property line and put a three-story. That we really kinda didn't want. So he's gonna build this thing. I thought, my inclination was, let's build the four stories out toward Memorial, so that the people on the east side don't have a tower to look at when they look out their backyard. So that would be, you wanted a reason, that would be my reason to support it if I did.
I would echo the mayor's.
And it's a variance, and it's not set in stone. I mean, this council has pretty much set the sta, we, we don't set a lot in stone here.
No, there are a lot of variances on a lot of things.
We have a lot of variances on a lot of things, but I, I think the folks on the east side of this project, we, we sure have to think about them. I mean, it's coming. Let's, let's, let's try to ease the burden on the folks that's gonna be next to it first.
At what point, and point well taken, I understand, at what point, how accommodative is accommodative? I think that this, that we have gone above and beyond what is necessary, what is reasonable, to. to accommodate this project. Allow me, and allow me to, to, to clarify something. I don't begrudge this applicant, or any applicant, from coming by, for coming in front of the city and asking for something, doing what they need to do and getting it. As an old baseball guy, I got to tip my cap and say, hey, job well done. So to the extent I have a problem with any of this, I mean, I'm not going to lay it on the applicant, that would be disingenuous. If I have a problem with it, it's with the people who are elected to represent we the people and the people that they appoint.
I understand, sure.
So again, how accommodative is accommodative? I know we're trying to be business friendly, but I think this is the point where we have to say, this is where if we bend anymore, we break. If you're going to make this exception, then again, where there's going to be more. And I think it's easier to just either hold to the code now, or hold this off, adjust the code, eliminate this argument, bring it back, pass it through. Now, if that doesn't meet someone's timeline, whose responsibility is that? Is it incumbent upon us as a community to solve every business situation? Of course not. Any other questions or concerns, or any colloquy?
I want to say something to you, sir, personally. You have been at a lot of meetings to do with this particular project, and I, it is my hope, it is my desire, that I echo your sentiment that we as an elected body are here for we the people, you the people, us the people. And I, as my echo, is my desire that every citizen would follow your, your example and just get involved and ask questions. So I want to say thank you, sir.
Well, well, thank you for the kind words, councillor, and, and I thank each of you for, for the, the job that you do. I know you're doing it because this is why they pay you the big money. I understand, you got to take time away from your businesses, from your families, from your other endeavors, and, and so do we the people who come down here and try to be prepared and make cogent points and make cogent arguments, and that's, it's just, it's.
We appreciate you coming, sir.
Jay, I'd like to make one comment.
Yes.
You're talking about that three-story code, you know, we probably passed that twenty years ago. You know, there's a lot of difference between what was happening then and what's happening now, but now that you've brought it to our attention, I'm sure that our city staff will get to work on changing that.
Well, I, I would hope so. If the city, if we think that, that the code is antiquated, then certainly we need to update it and change it. But I, I don't think that we need to make exceptions. It's the exception part that gets me. As I said, I'll use it again, the IRS example, and really, please, gentlemen, think about it. That's how the IRS code got that way. If you do this, make exception, it creates a loophole, patchwork, and rinse and rinse and repeat, that's where it ends up, so.
But unfortunately, we end up doing a lot of, and like, right, right across the street's a perfect example of an exception. The, that veterinary clinic that's being put in there does not meet our masonry levels. But we made an exception because they wanted it to match their other veterinary clinic that they have on the river.
It's going to be a nice looking structure.
And so, I mean, we have to do those kind of things all the time, unfortunately.
Well, if, if, if I understand that correctly, councillor, it was a five percent masonry that we were looking at?
I don't remember now.
Five percent.
It didn't match whatever we had.
It was a minute amount, and my understanding was that it was not going to be immediately visible on Memorial.
But it's an exception.
It's a variance.
It's an exception. This, but this also creates a precedence. There, there is precedent.
That creates a precedent too. Someone else can come back and say, we did the same thing for the church that was down, that's down there at, what's a hundred and thirty-first? I mean, you know, we, we do this all the time.
Okay. My, my, my respectful retort to that would be, where else in town do we have a four-story residential dwelling? We have four-story hotels, and I'm glad that they're here and that they're doing well. And I'm sure Memorial will want to come and that they will be warmly received here.
Though it'll probably be added now to the, to the code, because like you said, the reason we didn't was because we didn't have a ladder truck at the time.
Okay.
Now, and now we do, and we, we need to get another one. So just, just part, it's just part of, part of growth.
But nowhere else in town, we, we may have masonry variances that have been allowed at various places throughout the town, depending on whether they're in an appearance district or not. Where else in town do we have a four-story residential dwelling?
We don't, but we didn't have a four-story hotel yet either until we put one in.
Okay. Again, I'm looking at the code, and I'm, I've been a public sector guy for thirty-one years, and I'm not going to go there. It's better to change the code than it is to constantly amend it. As it constantly gets amended.
I agree with you, we're going to push to change the code, that, that's where I'm coming from. After this, I'd say, I'd say, we need to get the code changed. Now, if we want to change it before we put the thing in there, I'm okay with that too, but, but I think, I agree with you. I hate all these variances too. I can't stand them, because like, why do we have a code if we're going to change everything all the time?
I, I think it's more intellectually honest to change the code. I think it, it makes it easier for you guys in the future and your successors to make decisions without fear of negative consequences and ramifications, if everything is within the realm of the code. And I'm sorry, but if this doesn't meet someone else's timeline, I fail to understand, given how accommodative I think we have been, how this is incumbent upon us to fix this problem. And I mean that with all due respect. I'm not trying to be flip, I'm not. I would love to see, I would be happy to see, scratch the love part, I would be happy to see this apartment complex, as originally proposed back in twenty thirteen, get built a year from now and have people moved in six months ago. I would be very okay with that, because that's what I was okay with then.
Okay.
So.
We appreciate you coming.
Any other questions or concerns, gentlemen? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And councillor, thank you for your kind words, appreciate it.
No one else has signed up, but does anyone have a short comment they'd like to make? Yep. If you would, sir, keep it brief, we have a lot of business tonight.
Eric Moss, I'm at eighty-four hundred East Center, Twenty-third Street South. I have two questions. One is, how will this three hundred and sixty-plus family apartment building affect police and fire? Are we going to have enough police and fire to take care of, let's say, three hundred and sixty times three, however many that is, a thousand people? That's a lot of people right there you're adding. And another question I have, as my wife had mentioned where we live, there's no entrance or exit off of one hundred and twenty-first street to get to this apartment complex from this side over here? Is there only going to be access from Memorial into the apartment complex? That's it?
And then one hundred and twenty-first street crash gate, or emergency.
So you're telling me that coming in right past the firehouse is going to be three hundred and sixty cars coming through our residence potentially? Is that, I mean, is that what you're saying? Is that potential?
If they all go through at the same time, yes.
And how are they going to get through here? Because these streets are not zoned.
The creek's in between.
The creek's in between. It won't, it won't be on your street.
Okay, that was going to be my question.
No, it's not on your street. It's going to be through the center of the apartment complex.
Because we actually had, whenever they were doing all the dozer work and landscaping, people were driving dump trucks and stuff through our residence for about three months and just destroyed our neighborhood before the city actually blocked that off. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. Having dump trucks driving by your driveway every day, fifteen, twenty trucks every hour is quite, you know, not very pleasant in your home, so.
I understand.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to address something really quick. Your first question was, the reason why I came out as a citizen before I was elected and opposed this project was because we've had meetings with staff members, department heads, and said, you know, we have some staffing issues, and so that's, you know, one of the, one of the reasons why I did come out against this, you know, serving as a police officer in this town for years, I, that was always a concern I had in the back of my head too, so.
I mean, is that something we're?
Thank you for bringing it up.
I mean, is that, is that an issue that you guys see, is police, do you worry about something you guys see?
It's definitely something that we've been talking about quite a bit here recently, is that, it's a huge concern, is that, you know, as we get, and it's not just the apartment, we got, we got, how many new home additions do we have popping up right now?
Probably by the time this project is finished and people start moving in, we'll have more police and fire.
So there is a plan to.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Our first step. Do you have response time now?
Yeah, there is a, but it all comes down to money, I mean, you know.
We had a whole storm the other day, and the guys were doing it fast before we could get it shut down.
The problem with, problem with staffing, police and fire is, as everybody knows, sales tax drives the city, and that's how we pay for police and fire. So people come in.
So every time you buy a Walmart, or you're going to buy at the Costco, or anything across the street in Tulsa, we don't make a dime on that.
And rooftops affect businesses that come here. It's kind of the natural order of things, sometimes it appears, but it's, there's a big overall plan somewhere there that we're trying to keep pulled together.
You know, all the developers who've come down here that we've gone to try to recruit, the biggest thing they say is, give us your rooftops, tell me how, what's your density? What's your density? What's your density? That's what they all want to know. And so you got to have the density, and by the way, I don't know if you guys realize it, we're the last state in the union that does this way. Everything we, we, we live off of is sales tax. We're it, we're the last ones, and there's a reason the rest of the states have gone away, so you need to write to your legislators and say, this is crazy. Because there is a bill that, that we, that we pushed, that our city manager's pushed to try to change that. We're the only state in the union that does it that way. Everybody else, they get Avalorum, a little bit of Avalorum goes to city, et cetera, et cetera, so as it grows, some of that money goes, we don't get any of that. So it's purely sales tax. And despite what they say, I hate it when I hear Walmart, the Bixby Walmart, we do not have a Walmart. We do not have a Target, we do not have a Costco, we don't have anything on that side that all, every time you buy something, it goes to Tulsa, not to us. So keep that in mind when you do your shopping.
Adding manpower to our public services is on our, is on our concerns, on our upcoming budget, so we are looking at it. Yes, ma'am? Yeah, because the folks, the folks out in TV land can't hear you unless you go to that microphone, and please introduce yourself.
I'm Jan Swafford, eleven nine seventy-four, South Seventy-Third East Avenue, over in Fox Hollow. It's my understanding that you've really got a first-class apartment situation. My concern is, is when I look up Encore, which I feel like is kind of middle of the road, that's my opinion, they're charging more than eleven to twelve hundred dollars for their three-bedroom, two-bath apartments, and so when you sell eleven hundred to twelve hundred dollar, I don't know the size, I hope, it's, you scared me.
That's an habit.
Between the one, between what, about one and three bedrooms, Jay? I mean, Kevin?
Yeah, our, our pro forma income, our rent will be about five to twelve percent higher than Encore, as an example. So that was just an example, and it would be a one-bedroom, for instance, so, and we will be higher than that. Our three-bedroom might be eighteen hundred.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion on this agenda?
I want to talk about the water. All right, so you're talking about the pond up here. Do you own that pond? Can you develop that pond? Or is it, if you get rights to that pond, then that's what it's going to be?
We do not own this pond. This is, this is owned privately and is required to be a permanent detention facility. What we will develop here is, is a pond that if we don't acquire the rights to this, which we're in discussions on, there would be a walkway or a dike across here that would be moved, and it would look like one pond effectively, but we don't own that now, and we would come on down here.
So you would have the water regardless if you buy this pond?
That's correct, yeah. There'll be, there'll be water that will be pretty.
That's what I want.
And we've spoken to the folks and, and, you know, we're in discussions and agreed that, you know, if we don't acquire, we'll be good neighbors and, and we'll probably help them keep it clean and all those kind of things, but we, we hope to work it out to acquire it, but, you know, it, it doesn't have a lot of value, honestly, other than visual, which is already there, is water.
Under council rule, you're allowed up to ten minutes to respond to comments or, or anything to answer the, what the opposing parties may have said.
Duke, can I ask first, are there any questions? I don't want to keep us any longer than.
Yes, ma'am.
Condominiums that are over at Sixty-first and Lewis.
I'm sorry, could you approach the podium, please? Could you approach the podium?
We're sorry.
So the audience can hear your question?
Here, go right ahead.
Okay. Condominiums that are at Sixty-first and Lewis have water, and I heard you say something about recirculating. In that particular one, it's, it's like this really ugly, blue-green stuff that's in there. So does your recirculation take care of that problem?
Yes, we would not have dyed, dyed water. I know what you're talking about, we would not have dyed water. There's, there's a number of projects in town and other places that, that our architect has done that, that have some beautiful water. This is one that's in town, I can certainly pass that around if you want. And, and, you know, it's incumbent on us to make this pretty, because if you're going to have a first-class facility, you need to have water that's recirculated and pretty, and, you know, we know we can get water there to keep it leveled off too, so our ponds won't have the dirty ring around the top where it, the, the.
These are nice condominiums over there, but the water.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, is that Esplanade?
No, it's not Esplanade, Esplanade's, no, what is it?
Sashimi.
Is that what it is? Yeah, right across from Seven.
Yeah, I've seen the color of water, and we will not, we will not have color of water.
That's on television. Awesome.
Again, I don't want to, I don't want to keep everyone longer than necessary, but just to, to repeat the, the high points, I mean, we're, we're not, we're not doing four stories to save money, we're not doing it to necessarily get more commercial land, it does help that a little bit, it does help us get the water feature, it does help alleviate some of the concerns on the back of having three-story structures with windows on the east looking down into the homes there, those are all positives, but we're doing it mainly to respond to the market, because we, we really do believe, and it's not, it's not altruistic, I can't say the words together, it's not entirely altruistic, because we feel like there is a lacking in a really high-end suburban complex. I, it, it's, you've got several downtown, you've got Green Arch and several that are underway, you've got the enclave by Whole Foods on Forty-first and Peoria, but there's nothing, in my opinion, in South Tulsa or Broken Area that's of the quality that we want to bring, and I think it's a culmination of all of these things, it's not one feature. But the, honestly, the, the four-story element is something that when, when Dick told us that we felt like the market was there, it's, it's not just getting a certain caliber of people, although that's great, because frankly, they pay more rent, which, which I like, we'll pay more money to get them, but they also eat out more, and they buy more products and, and go to Walmart more and all their, excuse me, Walgreens, sorry.
Go to the QuickTrip across the street or go there or somewhere.
Get your groceries, these people are all going to shop for their groceries, no, I'm kidding. But, but again, we're, we're excited about that look and feel.
And honestly, I mean, of course, I didn't know how to do the study, but if you're driving, if you're up at McDonald's or anywhere along Memorial, before you get down past the mini storage, I don't think you can see the buildings if they were five stories, much less four. Now, you will see them, obviously, here when you come up, but we believe, looking across water, to the extent you see them, they're going to, they're going to be quite attractive, and, and if you're sitting over here, you know, we think that's going to be an attractive look, looking across, you know, sitting out here having dinner or whatever, looking across this water, I mean, if we work out something with these people, there may be walking trails around there, certainly we'll be up through here. So we're, we're looking at a project that's very unique and, and does not exist in Tulsa or, from my knowledge, Oklahoma City today, so those are the, those are the issues, and again, I, I apologize for the, the bifurcation of the process, I, I recognize that's, that's, that's out of the rules, it's painful, it's all those things, but, but again, you, you all have, you, you are a pro-business place, and, and I don't want to be an alarmist, but if this thing did get put off, or we did have, have to go back to three stories, I'm not sure we would have a project, I think it would be problematic. But more particularly, I'd rather focus on the positive. I think we'll have a great project if we can do this, not just because of the four stories, but because of all that it brings with the water feature, so that's really all I have. Any other questions?
I'll probably want to comment to that.
Okay.
You said that if it didn't go through, that it could be problematic. Well, I think it could possibly be problematic for us as well, because you've got the zoning, you sell the land to somebody else that comes in here with a completely different product, and I don't know what they would do.
And, and again, I don't want to be an alarmist, but oil's at fifty bucks, and, and, you know, I talk to bankers every day, and it is a different environment than it was six or nine months ago, so, and there is something to be said about timing, so yes, I am on a mission to get this thing done while we've got the money raised, while we've got bankers ready to go and contractors ready to go, so, but I, I believe the timing is critical, with all respect, so that's why we're asking you to do it in the way that we're doing it, and we realize there are a lot of things to be worked out, but honestly, they're not things that are going to cost a lot of money and are going to change my financing or my construction contract, signage and landscaping, and we're, we've got twice the landscaping Larry's got expected that the zoning requires, and those will all be worked out, but those and signs. all be worked out. But those and signs and fences aren't gonna, aren't gonna change my budget that much, or change the nature of the project, or the, the people that are buying into it. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. How do we, how do, do we have council discussion on, on that?
I wanna talk about the masonry.
Okay.
Where it was gonna fluctuate between buildings. I personally would wanna see forty percent on every single structure, minimum, in order to, for me to approve it. Because what I don't wanna see is one that has a whole lot, and one that doesn't have any masonry. You know, all hardy board or something. I don't, I don't wanna see that. And I know you would probably take more towards the front, of course, but.
Well, I, I think, and again, we're, this is your prerogative. I mean, you can, you can do this however you, you, you tell us to. But yes, I, I think if I had my preference, I would leave it to the architect to tell us where are the most visual areas. You know, it would be some of these. It would be right here, it would probably be down here on 121st. And then honestly, you all saw the slideshow of the hardy, the hardy board product. It's a good-looking product. So I would prefer that, that you say, okay, here's a minimum, even on the interior of a courtyard, or even on the east side, or whatever. Because frankly, and perhaps leave some of that to staff, or for your own discretion later on, I'm not sure, maybe, maybe Jared or Larry can tell me, but I'm not sure with the berm and the fencing, that the folks on the east, how much they'll be able to see that first floor. You know, so we may be wasting our, our, our view of having something there where nobody can see it unless somebody's walking down the ditch there. So, I would, I would rather put that in another part of the project. But again, that's just, that's preference, because we're about visual effect and looks.
So forty percent on each building is the same as a forty percent average over the whole project? It's gonna be the same?
Right, right. But what he was saying before, he would subtract, maybe it might go thirty percent in the back, and then maybe you'd go a little bit more on the front. And, and, and we would, we would submit, I mean, we would like to, to have you approve a twenty percent minimum, like on the interiors of the courtyards or whatever. And then we'll be accountable for forty percent across the project, but then leave that to, and I'm not sure, Eric, if that's, if that's you, or if that's Planning Commission, but we'll have details of every building, every face of every building. Here's a picture of that building, for somebody to look at and approve. But we would like to not be bound by saying it has to be everybody forty, because, you know, we, we think that's not probably the best look overall.
So, Eric, is that gonna come back to us in that fashion?
Yes. They will come back, every building, every side of every building, or at least every side of every unique building type. So the total percentages, they'll show you, and you'll be looking at it.
Will they, will either be able to approve or reject that, okay, at that time? Does that answer your question, Brian?
We're about thirty percent.
No.
No, how about nothing less than thirty percent?
The Taco Bell.
Taco Bell. Which will be another traffic hazard, I'm telling you, I'm telling you.
Okay, do we have?
I just, I wanted to make one comment really quick. I know that I'll probably be in the, in the minority, but I, I just have to stick to my original belief that this isn't in the best interest of our community, school system, or public safety. So, I, I, you know, it has nothing to do with the variances. It's been approved, but it is what it is.
Well, there again, this has been approved.
Yes, sir.
By council, a year and a half ago. And I think this council needs to take the high road, and try to work with these folks, and get the best product that we can, whether some of us disapproved it a year and a half ago or not, so.
If I could repeat, just, just for clarification, as, as we're moving towards you all making your decision, in terms of what I would submit for, for approval, one would be, of course, the, the variance from forty-eight to fifty. The other would be the four-story. The other would be a conceptual approval of the site plan. Another one would be the, the masonry requirement. However, the, the board chooses to do that, our preference would be a minimum of twenty to twenty-five, with an average of forty. But again, that's your, your decision. Another one would be the, the architectural shadow shingles. Those three brands, they're all about the same for the houses, the buildings, and tile, clay, or concrete on the, on the clubhouse. I think those are the points.
Eric, is all that wrapped up as a major amendment number one?
Yes.
Okay.
Details we were.
What about the elevator?
One elevator, at least.
Will that, will we require that before we give him another approval down the road?
Yes, that's in the report that was in your agenda packet. Planning Commission recommends.
But it's not, it's not part of major amendment number one?
It's a condition. It would be, yes.
It's, okay, it's a condition.
Yeah, they'll change the text of the PUD to specifically require at least one elevator.
Okay. So, the PUD, I don't wanna labor this too long. The major amendment, then, is gonna include, as so far as this major amendment goes, it's gonna include those things that the planning commission adopted.
Yes, sir.
As far as this amendment goes tonight. I know they, I know they had more stipulations.
And everything is staff recommended as well.
Okay, thank you.
What about the, the four-story buildings? I kinda like to see those with a little bit more masonry than everything else. Personal opinion. We're gonna give them that four-story. Maybe they need to, those need to look better than everything else.
As, as I put in the report, I'd recommend that the ones that are closest to Memorial, and the four-story ones are the ones that are closest to Memorial.
Good.
But the, the final breakdown of the proportions, you'll see, if not in two weeks. They could be ready in two weeks. If not, then you'll see this again as the PUD detailed site plan on the 27th.
And they, they would have more of this by virtue of more elevation, forty percent of government, four stories.
I was talking more percentage.
Same.
I mean, I know a bigger building gets.
But then, but then.
Sure, I think, but would you agree that maybe these might be better to have four story in this case than four stories here? That would be our, our proposal of the interior courtyards. You know, there are people looking here, been looking for water. They're not gonna be looking so much at the trees back here. So they're not gonna be looking so much at the face of those buildings as they should be out here, perhaps, or up there.
Any other discussion? Are we ready, and do we have a motion?
A typical motion would be to approve the major amendment to PUD eighty-one, as recommended by staff and the planning commission. And then if you had any other conditions you wanted to impose, certainly that could happen.
The one that I recall was an absolute baseline masonry on all buildings, twenty-five percent for the architect, or whatever the council would come up with.
Oh, okay, it was minimum baseline per.
There was a concern that some elevations may have no masonry.
Okay, so we're talking about forty percent average, minimum of twenty-five percent per building. That's, that's, that's what we're voting on now.
That would be in addition to the planning commission's. It would have a minimum, you're, you're suggesting a minimum of twenty-five percent.
I thought that's.
On any building?
Yes, all buildings.
He's making sure that that's understood, be included in the motion.
That's the motion, to approve per, per planning commission and staff recommendation, with the additional requirement that no building have less than twenty-five percent masonry.
So moved on the motion.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
About a second, then it dies. There's no motion on the floor?
I'll second it.
Toron.
Yes.
Easton.
Yeah.
Lautermail.
Only because you said it's gonna be, it better be high-end, 'cause the only reason I voted for it the first time. Yes.
Stewart.
No.
And Guthrie.
Abstain.
Since it counts as a no, but it passes three to two.
Okay, let's take a short break before, okay, now we know that agenda, agenda item number three, and agenda item number four. We're not doing those.
Yeah, we'll postpone those until they're ready for approval.
And so our next agenda item will be five, but let's take a short break.
Five minutes?
Five-minute break.
Can we bring in liquor?
Session of March thirtieth, Bixby City Council meeting at eight-ten. Patrick, oh, let me read the agenda item. Agenda item number five, consider discussing approval of resolution number twenty-fifteen-six, approving and adopting a Bixby City Council handbook and code of ethics. Patrick?
Mayor, council, as you'll recall, this is a matter that was continued from your last meeting, to give council members an opportunity to review the material that was provided them, perhaps without sufficient time for, for you all to review that. In the interim, I have met with council members, and I have also, this morning, emailed out a, an attorney, city attorney's opinion that advised you that, in my opinion, the proposed rules did not violate any constitutional prohibition, prohibitions against infringement upon free speech rights guaranteed by the Constitution. And, so I stand here today really to continue with you the discussions of, of the merits of this handbook and code of ethics recommending approval. I will add that just before the, the meeting work session, the council had received an email from the executive director of the Oklahoma Municipal Insurance Group, which is our insurance company, the attorney, John Wood, Woods, I forget his name, whether it has an S on it, but he, he fully endorsed the adoption of the, the handbook, particularly as pertains to personnel. And this is a part of the OMAG, OMAG's best practices, that they recommend that all city councils do, is to provide some code of ethics, as well as some guidance for the council members as to how they should conduct their business. So with, with that endorsement, I'm even more encouraged that this is something that the council should adopt.
I read through this. Like I said, I can handle everything in here except this part about the three Rs of Bixby government leadership, so.
What section you have?
That's in, was it seven?
Tab seven, page one of the code of ethics is where.
I was gonna say, what, all, there's, it's like the whole thing. I just, to me, it looks like it's a big stick to whack somebody on the head with, and, and, and I just, I just can't vote for it if it's in there. So that's just me, or can't vote yes for it. So that's just me. So, what that's worth.
That's art, that's, okay.
The three Rs. I, I wanted to even discuss, too, councilmen, going off of your assessment. I look at what, and I, and you and I spent a lot of time on tab five, and I wanna say thank you for, for meeting with me on Thursday night. I think we met for about an hour.
Yes, sir.
And I look at the, the three Rs here, and I, I take a look at council members, shall I respecting here, the county city manager, structure, Bixby's government is outlined in the city charter. I don't believe in the city manager form of government. So is it because if I go out and say I don't believe in the city manager form of government, am I then disrespecting the city manager form of government?
No, you don't have to believe in it. You do have to follow, it is the law of the city. It's the law of our, of our land, and so you should respect it as long as it is the law.
Sure, it's like a speed limit. If I don't like it, I still have to obey it.
Yes, sir. That's a good example.
Correct. But, but, but there's also this broad brush stroke of, you know, well, he said something about it, therefore he doesn't respect it.
Right.
Where do we draw the line?
Well, the council will draw the line.
I was kinda worried. It was just so, there was just so many things. I could see someone coming in and pointing a finger at somebody, or whatever. That's the reason I, I couldn't handle it. So.
There was also one in here that talks about, you know, if I can find it, body movements. Did you see that? The body movements? You know, Dennis and I are pretty, you know, vocal, loud people, and what if someone looks at us and goes, that was a violation of the three Rs? Bless God.
Well, then council members are supposed to approach you, advise you that they think that's an offense from, from the code of ethics or the handbook, and, and if you don't.
No, go ahead.
And if you don't agree, or you don't meet agreement, then they should go to the mayor, and he's to make a judgment as to whether or not he thinks it's in violation of it.
Here it is.
And if he, if he thinks it is, then he brings it to the entire council.
But see, that's where I think we're getting on, you know, where it's our personality to be that way. It says council members should be aware of their body language and tone of voice, as well as words they use can appear to be intimidating and aggressive. We're not church mice here. I mean, you know, we, we have our own way of how we conduct ourselves, as long as it's professional. I don't understand why stuff like this has to be in there.
Yeah, that, that was some of the, some of the things I had.
Honestly, I think I've seen council members that, and not necessarily in this body, but, but who have, have tossed things on, and slammed doors, and, and done things, and, and that's, in my opinion, I think the council would agree, is inappropriate. It's childlike, you know, it's just, it's a, it's not a civil way to act. And I think that as long as you behave yourself, you don't throw shoes at people, or, or start using names, I think that, that you're, you're probably gonna be okay. But, but when you start slamming doors, and, and cussing, and things like that, I don't believe that the council will tolerate that kind of conduct, so.
Then it goes back to the chair, the chair of the meeting is the mayor, correct?
Yes, sir.
Then that would be up to the mayor's discretion to do that, not outlined in these to, to say, hey, you might wanna bring it down a few notches, not, oh, it's, it's in the three Rs. Because I, I look at these three Rs, and I see it as ways to wrangle Richie, as I see it as. Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing this as, you know, something that should, you know, there, there's just, well, this is interpretation, this is interpretation of this. At the end of the day, we're the elected officials from our constituents. And the mayor is the one who is the figurehead that has the title, that has the, the, the job description, the duty to run the meetings. And I think that not only does this dictate how we're supposed to act, and then Dennis and I, we can't, you know, be loud, you know, across the table, because we have before. We've disagreed before, have we not? And, you know, in no, in no way did I ever think, man, I'm intimidated, you know, he's not acting like a church mouse. I don't get that. You know, I, it's, it's up to the mayor. So what you're doing is taking away from us our right to express ourselves, and you're taking away from the mayor his right and the three Rs to effectively chair his meetings.
As I, as my legal opinion that I provided you states, it does not infringe upon your rights of free speech. You can still do every one of those things. You can still do it. And it, but it doesn't, it's not a violation of your rights of free speech if this council, as a body, decides that that is inappropriate. And what is supposed to happen under the sanctions provision, which starts on page seventeen of the code of ethics, is if a council thinks that, that another counselor has violated the code of ethics and, and the handbook, they are supposed to approach the individual who is the offender, and say, listen, I think, I think you might be out of hand here. If that doesn't work, and if it continues, the provisions goes on to say, the council member should approach the mayor, and the mayor should decide whether or not, in his opinion, it is in violation of the code of ethics in the handbook. And if he does decide it is, then he should bring it to the council. And if he does not decide, then the council or a council member can bring it to the council on their own. So it's a, it's a progressive discipline thing, and it's supposed to give people warnings, and hopefully they can.
The problem is that as soon as one of them occur, the press will jump all over. And so then, now you're gonna be guilty by association, no matter what. And the press will make whoever that council member is look like, even though he may just raise his voice, that, oh, that, that, that Lautermail guy, he needs to go, because he's, he's a mean one. He's a mean one. Because there's somebody, somebody's called him out due to their handbook. So that's, that's my problem I have with it. It's not necessarily what's gonna happen to council. It's as soon as that goes forward, the press is gonna jump on, and they're gonna blow it up.
And the press will decide, probably, and the public will decide whether or not the council is acting, is out of hand, or the individual council is.
If they get all, if they get all the information, but usually, as we've seen in stories, is they get just a little bit, just enough, just enough to sell papers, or sell newscast, or whatever.
You know, I'm, I mean, I don't know, to me, and this is the last I, I wanna, I'm gonna say about this, because you probably know how I'm gonna vote. Now, I mean, I'm even for passing this without the three Rs.
Yeah, me too. I would, I would vote for everything else without the three Rs.
Because the three Rs pretty much takes away our right to, to express ourselves, to be a voice for our constituents. And in my opinion, it sets up a government by the city manager for the city manager. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not for the three Rs being in there at all.
And the only thing I could say in their favor, or more in their favor, is that this is, this particular language was taken out of provisions that were established by the town, city of Coeida, and the cities of Sand Springs. And I know that it, this particular provision was before the council of mayors, or it's a statewide organization that mayors had. And, and so it's something that, it's in, got a wide cross-section of approval.
Am I violating charter? Am I violating state statute? We go back to, am I violating, am I violating charter? Am I violating state statute? If I'm not violating charter, state statute, then, then this is clearly government overreach.
Any other questions?
When you're talking about the three Rs, are you referring to that whole section, code of ethics?
Yeah, the whole section.
Well, you know, there's some good things in there.
Well, no, no, mayor, mayor, the three Rs are different. In the code of ethics, there's page one through ten, which talks about conflicts of interest, constitution, statutes and charter. To look, to look at the three Rs, at the conclusion of page ten, there is council code of ethics, the three Rs. You know, I mean, it, it gets heated between councilmen sometimes, and I, and I don't, for sure don't take it personally, okay? I may not, I may not agree with everybody up here, but at the same time, we're trying to represent our wards as best as possible. And I, I think that amongst us, we have, we've had some pretty heated arguments. I had one last week, you know? And I, I can tell you off, you know, off record, I can tell you in no time that I go, oh my gosh, I think he just violated the three Rs. I was like, well, that's just them, going down the road, whatever.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm Italian, so it's hard for me to, so you'll never see an, an all Italian community put that in there.
So what page do you begin where you think it's, that you can't agree with, starting on page eight or starting on page ten?
In tab seven.
Well, I'm in tab seven.
Right here is what, and councilman Lautermeier, you can-
Yeah, I didn't get that. I just, I started reading it and read some stuff, and I said, well, I can't, I can't live with, I can get specific as you get into it.
Okay, you're talking about from page one to page eight.
The entire three Rs, yes, sir.
Well, I see a lot of good stuff in there. Um, a lot of this is just reproduction of what was in the charter. I've read this before, but I'm trying to refresh. So we've got a few pages there that's a thing of, uh, just a restatement of what is in the charter. The council's relationship with the city attorney, I think that ought to be talked about, relationship with city manager, council conduct with city staff, I think those are all important things that need to be here. They, they, they point out permitted activities and prohibited activities, coordination with the city staff. I'm trying to look and see if there's just a few things we can pull out that would make this acceptable to everyone, is my point. But I can't discard the whole thing because I think there are some things there that definitely need to be stated, and that's my opinion.
Yes, sir, and I, I want to agree with you. I think that there are things in there that could be beneficial, and I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think that when we look at that whole particular, when we look at this whole particular set of legislation essentially, page one through page eighteen, I, I don't want to treat it like some, you know, and not saying you're suggesting that at all. I don't want to treat it like a congressional bill and say, well, we'll figure it out, you know, as we go on down the road. I think that, you know, if, if we can pass this without that portion, and then come back and then look at it as a body and say, what will work, how, how can we reword this so it wouldn't be so restrictive of a councilman expressing themselves?
I would want to go the other way. I would want to say, what do we want to take out and pass it without the things in it? Would be the way, that would be my plan of attack. Because, I mean, we're talking, we got state statutes in here. I, I don't know how we can talk about those. A state statute is a state statute.
You're right. I mean, those types of things, it's, it's-
What's there to talk about on those?
Well, the three Rs, roles, we all have a role. Responsibility, we all have responsibility, and respect, we should have respect. So if you talk about three Rs, I have no problem with those three Rs. But, I mean, if there's something in here that's specific, can be removed, I got no problem with that. But I kinda echo the mayor. I think, um, if you look at just the three Rs, I think that, that's ethics, and I think that we need ethics.
I, I don't see a lot of teeth to this.
Well, that's my, my big, my fear, the, the teeth that this, this body has, like I said, my fear for somebody would be that the, the press will jump on it, and they'll, they'll ruin somebody's career. That's mine, because you're right, there's, as far as teeth in this, there really isn't much. I mean, you know, you can't take him on to shoot the guy or anything, but, um, but I could see the press jumping on it.
No.
Will I, will I be sanctioned there?
Councilor McCa, I'd, I'd like to debate that just a little bit, and that is, I think that the, the press will jump on, uh, council that is not civil to its, each other, and that businesses that want to come, that would like to come to Bixby would not come to Bixby if we don't have civil discourse in this council, this body. So, uh, I think one could bring public, uh, press on the city, and one, the other one obviously could too.
I mean, I mean, you're, I'm sorry, Patrick.
So, I'm, I'm through. I, I think that, but I just think that that's a two-edged sword.
Look at, look at page six, where it talks about active listening. I mean, really, it's disconcerting as speakers to have council members not look at them when they're speaking? I mean, we have to be treated like we're in second grade?
I mean, that was, that was one of the things I noticed too, the active listening. There's a, there's a couple of things just in here that, as I'm reading through, and I was like, wait, that's kind of just, because there's some things, like if you're sitting here, up here talking, and we're trying to look at something up here, someone could look at, at that as, well, that's not active listening, because that says everyone needs to be focused right there, and sometimes you're looking at other pieces of paper, and just little things like that.
And this, this goes on to say that, uh, council members should be aware of facial expressions, especially that could be interpreted as smirking, disbelief, anger or boredom. I think that, uh, obviously, you went through a lot, a long public hearing today, and it was, it was good that you were attentive to that. But if, if you're on your iPhone or, or doing things like that, uh, that's disrespectful, I think, to all the speakers that come before this body. So I think that there are good portions in that provision. Active listening is, who could be against that?
Yeah, but I shouldn't be told I have to do that. That's what, that's what it kinda comes down to.
Not told you have to, I believe it's-
You know, I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be, you know, and, you know, some of the, some of the stuff in here, like the, uh, private encounter, this, this private encounters area, there's just a couple of things in here. I just, I mean, John brings up some good points, there's some really good stuff up in the front, um, that is in the charter and, and, and in law, and that, those kind of things make sense, but some of this other stuff. So I didn't know, like I said, without going through it and specifically leading certain sections, which, you know, I'll be honest, I didn't come here, you know, prepared to do that. But that's the reason I said, well, I could do without that section. But, you know.
What if we pulled out page four through the top half of page seven?
This is the ethics portion here, so, page. This is policies and protocols related to conduct.
Yeah.
Conduct with one another in public and private encounters.
Where'd you end on seven, John, on the council worship of the city attorney?
Where? Yeah.
You know, and like, like, and thank you for bringing that up, mayor, because, look, be welcoming to speakers and treat them with care and gentleness. You know, like, I, obviously, I was in, uh, I wasn't in favor of the last item that came up before council, but I went out there and shook his hand and wished him nothing but the best. And there are people in here to witness that. I, I didn't take it as a bad, a bad thing. He's now about to do business, you know? And so I, I just, I, I just see it as, you know, this is just overkill.
Counsel staff, we treat all staff professionally. I wonder if someone's, I mean, I know you should, don't get me wrong, but what if someone says, well, I wouldn't treat you professionally. It's minor word against him, you know?
Well, I think that's, I think that's-
I mean, those are the kind of times-
I think that's still in the charter, yeah.
I mean.
Covered by charter.
Is it? Well, it says you have to treat staff. I mean, I understand in the day, the course of, of human events, we all want to do that, but I'm just, well, I just don't want to get a bunch of finger pointing. That's what I'm concerned with.
There's a difference between the charter, state statute, and what this is trying to do. And so I'm, I'm actually, ma'am, I'm for what you just suggested.
Just to clarify, that was what, page what, four through?
Top of seven.
Seven.
So when you say the top of seven, you-
Oh, top of seven, okay. So you pick back in an unofficial setting, settings?
So you leave the unofficial settings there? Well, I, I don't believe anyone should make a promise on the behalf of council.
That's correct.
And I don't know, we need to talk about each other.
So you're saying remove above unofficial settings and leave unofficial settings, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that would, that would be my contention, if that would help, if that would help alleviate some concern.
Like I said, there's just so many things in here, just little things here and there.
Well, I sure think there's some good things in here. And I think it provides a general guideline and general handbook of how a councilman needs to be. I, I didn't see it as detrimental to councilmen as, as you guys did.
Mayor, I'm, I'm-
I didn't see it as a lot of bite in the teeth here.
Mayor, I'm for passing this with the removal of pages four through, on top of page seven.
Under section seven.
Under the three Rs.
Tab, tab seven.
Tab seven, then three Rs.
Four through seven, remove that.
Under the three Rs.
Reading, writing and arithmetic.
So what, so? If we remove four, five, six, and the top half of seven, is that what you guys are thinking?
Yeah.
I see a couple modern ones in here, but those, that's, that's, that's kinda, I could, I mean, I could cut it back to that.
Cut that?
Yeah.
Does someone want to make that motion?
Make that motion.
You would make that motion, you would accept, what is this, a resolution?
See, when I would say that, we would make a motion that we accept this handbook, with the exception of, in tab seven?
Now, Dennis, there, there's more than one page. It's, we're gonna have to go back.
I'm gonna get real specific, tabs, so it's under tab seven, under-
There's more than, there's two page fours, so there's two page sixes.
Under code of-
Code of Ethics.
Under code of ethics.
Page four through the top half of page seven.
Page four through the top half of page sevens.
Page seven.
And ending with different points of view being the last sentence.
Yes, ending with different points of view being the last sentence, yeah.
So we'd keep at least the title, policies and protocol related to conduct.
Unofficial settings would be, the net would, would be where it pick up at.
In unofficial setting, yes. Honestly, I think that guts it, but.
You think that guts it? Well, I'm willing to listen. Why do you think that guts it?
Well, I mean, I could, item by item. Uh, you don't like the fact that it says practice civility and decorum in discussions and debate, difficult questions, tough challenges?
I think that's just a give me. I think that's just-
Then let's leave that in there.
A give me.
That's just, I just don't, I'm, I'm afraid that, that it's gonna be used against, against someone. That, that's my biggest fear. Is it later on, not just, not, not, I'm, I'm not thinking about this council, I'm thinking about the next council, the council after that, you know? We all get along fairly well, but we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. Yes, well, but still, we're, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future.
And-
I would prefer to see this handbook get passed with, with those four pages not in it, than not get any handbook passed at all. Trying to find a middle ground.
With decorum.
And I would really like to have a, I would really like to have a unanimous vote on this. I, I don't want a three-two this thing. And maybe we can come back and look at those pages, Pat?
The, the decorum in a court setting, which is what you're very familiar with, and a council setting as well.
Yes, sir.
Is very much different than the decorum we're talking about here.
Okay, so we have-
To a certain degree, I think that there's, that, the court is an adversarial proceeding, you know, I, I, and this is, this could be a debate here. This is the council's handbook. It's, it's the council's code of-
We can come back into, we do have a motion. Let's, let's, let's follow this thing out, and we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Lautermeier.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Todoroff.
Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes.
And Easton.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, that's, that's approval of the resolution that was also presented to you. Uh, I will come up with a different pages.
And maybe you can work on those four pages.
I will.
I'm open to, I'm open to, I just, like I said.
We are decent, we are decent people, we are civil, we are civil people. I understand where you were going with this, and I, I appreciate the concerns of the other two council members, but quite frankly, we've got a handbook with a unanimous decision, and I am just absolutely tickled to death.
Well, I, it was prepared at your, your request, and so I'm glad that you're pleased with it.
Okay.
And I appreciate the council's consideration.
And the city attorney can, can repaginate, make other changes.
I will do that, and I'll-
We, we did have a carryover item from the work session. Betty, will you promise that thing will be short?
You should adjourn this six-part meeting.
Or do you want to pass it? Or you want to go on? How many minutes are you thinking?
We have to adjourn this meeting and then go into that one.
I understand we'd have to adjourn this one. I just want to commit to Betty first.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We will adjourn this meeting, and we will reopen the work session.